Call to order, Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, March 14th, 2011, at 7:00 PM in Exbridge, Upper Town Hall. If everyone could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're having a very short meeting with the new business discussion action item of the Farnham House. David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason that we asked for this meeting about a week ago had to do with voting a designation that was required by the grant in order to pursue the grant. Unfortunately, we needed to get it done by March 25th, which is not too far away, and this was the only meeting that afforded that opportunity. However, as we were going through the grant application today, it became more and more obvious that based on the terms of the grant, the size of this project may not be conducive to applying for the grant. I gave you a few specifics in the memorandum that I distributed today. One of the main things is Mass Historical requires an architect to prepare one section of the grant, Section 5, which is about a 10-page application. It's called the Technical Planning Survey. The cost of preparing that document is something that is borne entirely by the town and is not part of the 50% reimbursement should we obtain the grant. Interestingly, if you were actually doing, if we were doing a full-on proposal to study the Farnham House and to do a full restoration of the Farnham House, this part of the project would be subject to a 50% reimbursement. However, if you're doing a bricks and mortar reconstruction project, you have to hire the architect, you have to have the architect do the work for the submission, but you're still not going to get 50% of it back. One of the things that Francis Cove, the chairman of the Historic Commission, mentioned at town meeting was a concern about a bulging wall at the Farnham House. One of the things that they look at is they look, when you do a submission, under number one, the architect would have to document all the issues with the building. So, looking at the terms of the grant, we may be required to fix that within the same project because it would be considered to be something that needed to be repaired because it was a structural deficiency within the building. We also have to get a legal opinion at our own cost from town council. They also, if you look at the grant app, it's very much stilted towards buildings that are handicapped accessible. As we know, the Farnham House is not handicapped accessible at this point. And the one thing we did always know about is there would be a perpetual preservation restriction. Now, you know, on a $200,000 project where, you know, we were funding 100,000 of, some of this might make a little sense. Unfortunately, at a $40,000 project, I mean, just throwing a number out there, if all of our costs with the architect and town council came up to say $7,000 out of a $40,000 project, we'd be funding 27,000 and we'd be getting a grant for 13,000. From a cost-benefit perspective, that just doesn't seem to be something that's all that beneficial. So, my recommendation at this point is that we forego the grant opportunity, go out, do, you know, do the full procurement process to get the project done in as inexpensive way possible, but go without the grant.
David, have you contacted Historic Commission and been aware of this and have they provided any input back?
There's, they're, you really, they really don't want to see, hear anything from you until you are putting something forward.
No, like Francis Cove.
No, he's, I believe he's still out of town at this point, so.
No, he's back.
He's back, is he? No, I mean, we were looking through this today and I haven't managed to talk to Francis about it.
I have a couple of suggestions.
Sure.
Now, I've heard the bulging wall story for a long time. There are two kinds of bulging walls, bulging anything, stable bulges and unstable bulges. An unstable bulge concerns me because it means it's getting worse and worse.
Correct.
A stable bulge does not concern me that much. We need to determine which we have. Second, it's vital to preserve the integrity of the roof. And as I, you know, if you want to spend $40,000 trying to duplicate exactly what they did in 17, 22, whatever, that's fine. If it were me and I owned the building, I would not do that. Wood shingles are not the preferred material to use. And while I like history, I'm not cuckoo about it. They're not the best material to use, and I would choose something that is lighter, is better in cost, and will last longer. Because if you do that, you always have the option in the future because you're preserving the substrata of, you know, if we hit the megabucks or whatever it is, you can do that. But it's vital to preserve the structural integrity of the roof. But step number one is to find out whether the bulge is creeping bulge or a stable bulge. And then we'll go from there. We have an appropriation.
Yes.
Was the appropriation contingent upon seeking a grant?
No. It was not.
Okay. It shouldn't take that long to find out.
But the appropriation, if my memory serves correctly, was that we were only going to, it was a $40,000 project, but we were only going to fund $20,000.
No, we appropriated 40,000. We had, we put in the commentary that we are going to be seeking a historic preservation grant, and any unused balance, if any, would be turned back at the conclusion of the project.
And we were also told that these type of grants are almost always granted.
They are.
Yeah.
They certainly are.
This one.
Well, we didn't know the specifics of the, all the steps that require, but I thought we also.
You can fix a lot of roof for $20,000.
Right, I thought we limited our expense, though. We didn't, without the grant, we can't spend 40,000, if I remember correctly, in the way that we worded that.
No, it was, no, that was the Board of Selectmen's recommendation that was made at town meeting. However, the motion was to appropriate the full 40,000.
Any other questions?
You will be closing the loop, though, with Francis.
Yes, I will.
Okay. So, I don't feel this requires any action by the board. Does anyone feel differently?
Well, the, I mean, closing the, I mean, here's the situation, though. The application is due when?
The application is due on the 25th of March.
Right, so, wasn't the reason why we had to have the minutes, and there was a reason why we?
Right, if we were going to be submitting the application.
Right, right. So, I think that, based on that, we should provide a direction that the grant, I mean, we should have a motion and action of the board not to pursue.
Not to pursue the grant?
Not to pursue the grant at this point. So, um.
How about that motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. We technically have to return, correct? Technically have to return. This meeting is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Nothing in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned?
We're not the whole.
All these people here, I don't think they'd be very happy about this. All right, and it's 7:10, so let's start the next one. Okay, so. All right, call to order, the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, March 14th, 2011, at 7:10 PM. This meeting is being videotaped, which I neglected to say in the other one for the benefit of those who can watch it later. If everyone would please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance to open our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements? Does anyone have any announcements?
Yes. What was that? What was the date for Senator Moore coming in?
Twenty-third, right.
Senator Moore will be visiting town hall on the 23rd at, what was the time?
9:30? Yeah, 9:30.
9:30. I will be inviting department heads and elected officials in a memorandum, but certainly any citizens are welcome to attend also.
Excellent. How long will you be here for?
I think as long as necessary. He didn't really give a timeframe, just a starting time.
Any other announcements? No? Okay. Citizens Forum, is anyone here to speak for Citizens Forum? We have such a large group of people, I'm going to make sure I don't miss anyone. Okay. Is anyone here to speak for Citizens Forum? No? Okay. All right, so with that, then, I will open the public hearing for fiscal year 2011, 2012, water and sewer rates and the rate structure. David?
Can I make a suggestion? This is a public hearing.
Yes.
And David was kind enough to give us all this material in advance, so hopefully we have already read it.
Yes.
So, rather than have him read it again.
I already, good.
Can we summarize?
I've asked David pretty much before the meeting just to give us his recommendation of the summary, so, yes, given, it will speed the process along.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just give you the crib notes version of the water and sewer rate recommendation. What the board has before you are two recommendations. One, that Option A is, has to do with level funding the rates, the consumption rates. The CIF rates, that you'll notice in both Option A and Option B, are the same. They are actually moving under either scenario. Just a quick note on the CIF rates, the CIF rates do include all town and school buildings for the next rating period, and it will, they will have them going forward. But on the consumption rates, Option A is level funding, Option B is a slight reduction. The reduction is mainly among the lower-end users, those who use 0 to 800 cubic feet in water, and the same with sewer, and the second tier on the water, up to 3,000 cubic feet. Those rates are going down. Level funded going forward under Option B would be over 3,000 cubic feet and the irrigation rate. So, what we tried to do is we tried to basically give a reduction to the lower users, who are usually, you know, the elderly and smaller households, while keeping everybody else at the same rate. The reason that we did drop the rates is, has to do with the fact that there will be a new CIF rate coming on this year. That'll be, that'll be for the development at the Rosenfeld well site. So, that's adding a little more than $80 a year to the bill, so we reduce the consumption rates in order to hopefully get everything to even out. So, based on that, our recommendation is that the board vote for Option B. And if you look at the, if you look at the motion that was written up, the Water Department just asked to put one thing on the tail end of that motion, that being to make the rates effective April 1st, 2011.
Excuse me, in our earlier conversation before the meeting, you indicated Option A was the option that kept the rates.
Keeps, Option A keeps the rates the way they are.
Yes.
Option B reduces the rates.
Okay.
And, but keeps the bill overall level, based on the average bill that we talked about. So, our recommendation is for Option B.
Forget the average bill. If a person uses the same amount of water.
Yeah.
This year than that they did last year.
Yes.
And the rates are, we don't change the rates. When you said the current rate is for the 0 to 800 cubic feet, 2,450.
Yeah.
So, if we don't change the rate.
Yes.
And they don't change the amount of water they use.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't their bill stay the same?
No.
Why?
It would go up by $83 because of the new CIF rate.
Yeah, but the CIF rate is there anyway.
Right. But, okay, aside from the CIF rate.
Okay.
It would remain the same.
Okay. So, what is the advantage to the rate user to reducing the rate, which is supposed to cover current operating costs and a little bit of a surplus to take care of any unforeseen contingencies during the year?
Because when we looked at the consumption, under Option A, leaving everything level, we would have a surplus of a little over $200,000, plus any budgetary turnback, plus any retained, plus the retained earnings that the fund already has. If the rate went down by, if the usage went down by 5%, you would wind up with $145,000 in excess earnings. Under Option B, now, we're just talking water, you get a surplus of $67,000, and if you have a 5% reduction, it's, you lose $16,000 overall.
What's the annual operating income currently of the Water Department?
The annually operating income? Okay, hold on.
Maybe Ben knows, it's off the top of his head, no?
Basic, well, basically, the revenue is 971, the budget's about 761, so, under these rates, $200,000. That's the, that's the income, yes.
Okay. No, no, no. $971,000.
Yes.
You said is the income.
Is the income.
Which is almost a million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. So, the current, if we leave Option A in place. The projected surplus will be?
$200,000.
$200,000, okay.
That's correct.
Which is 20%.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I asked Ben late Friday if he could give me any idea, if he knows about any expenses that might be lurking down the road. I don't mean five years from now, and I don't mean the CIF rates, but things that we need to reasonably anticipate.
We laying of the mains, we know we're going to have to do at some point, correct?
Yeah, but that's long-term stuff.
Right, and that, that would have.
That may be the capital game.
Right, but that would be something that, when you say long-term, it would have a long, we may have to do it sooner than later.
Yes, but we will pay for those major improvements by borrowing, so the users will pay for that in the future. What I'm concerned about is lowering the rate and then raising it again because we find it, you know?
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about. However, a 20% operating surplus seems, you know, a little on the high side, unless there's something to justify it, or unless we think that, well, we have things that we really should be doing, but we're putting it off because we want to maintain the surplus. I don't want a yo-yo effect on the rate, if we can avoid it.
Right.
But the theory should be that when we make major improvements or improvements or replacements of the system, that we bond that through, and pay it through CIF rates, so that future users paying the fee.
Right.
If we have too much of a surplus, that means we're overcharging current rate payers who may not benefit from some of those improvements. So, I want to have a happy meeting. I'm not looking for perfection, because we can't reach perfection.
Well, I think with that in mind, the one thing you have to look at is part of figuring out where the surplus is, is what do we have in the fund right now? Right now, water is up to 1.5 million.
Okay.
So, you know, if we were sitting at 800,000 like we were a few, a couple of years ago, my recommendation would certainly be to keep the rates level.
We have a good cushion.
Yes.
All right.
So, that's, that all figures into the calculation.
Okay. What's the number on the sewers side?
Sewer has 850,000.
David, if we chose Option B, you said that the amount going into the reserve would be about 145,000, did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
So, that's more around.
If the levels remain the same.
Okay, right.
Now, here's the thing.
Okay.
With sewer, the levels have remained the same.
Okay.
Last year, last summer, we had a hot summer. There was a lot of irrigation that went on because the water jumped up almost 5% in usage. And remember, going back two years, two years ago, we had cloudy, cool conditions all summer long, and we didn't really have as much watering or irrigation going on.
Even with our water ban?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Wow.
Shocking, isn't it? But what winds up, what wound up happening is when you look last year to this year, the sewer, the sewer usage was virtually unchanged. So, unless, so, you can make the argument at this point that the consumption, the regular consumption of water and sewer counts isn't moving all that much. So, we shouldn't be seeing that minus 5% reduction that I put in there just so the board could see, you know, both ways what would happen. So, that's where we should be, even with the reduced, you know, we're looking at, you know, about $83,000.
Under the water, the CIFs, which is the next one to fall off?
The first CIF will fall off in about eight years.
And the other one?
All the other ones, they're all fairly new. Most of them have 18 to 20 years.
And then this one here will run 20 years.
That's correct. So, they're not going to be going away anytime soon.
And what about sewer?
Sewer has two, two of the sewers have eight years left, which is CIF 2 and CIF 3, and CIF 1 has about five years left on it.
I'd make a motion that the board vote to set the consumption and capital improvement fee rates listed in column marked Option B, as posted in the notice on the public hearing advertised in the Worcester Telegram on Monday, February 28th, 2011, for the fiscal year 2011 through 2012 water sewer billing cycle effective April 1st, 2011.
Jay, you covering both water and sewer?
Correct.
Your motion?
Yes, both.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The public hearing's closed. If it pleases the board, since there are quite a few members in the audience, I'd like to move to old business B, discussion, action, Cedar Woods, Anthony and Jacomo Wayes, eminent domain taking. Everyone in the green, that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, Rob Knappich, on behalf of the residents of Cedar Woods. Briefly, you recall at your last meeting on February 28th, there was further discussion centered around the subject of the taking of the Cedar Woods roadways by the Board of Selectmen. And in particular, there was additional discussion of how to protect the town's interests in the event that the town were sued by any of the residents' mortgagees. I let you know that I had drafted an agreement that, by which the residents collectively agreed to indemnify the town. Town Council had some comments on that agreement, and I'm here to tell you this evening that the residents have agreed to sign that agreement with town councils' edits and revisions. At your last meeting, you also asked if I would prepare a draft of a town meeting article or articles for the taking of the roadways. I did that, and I forwarded that draft to the town meeting, town manager, pardon me, the next day. We were also made aware at the last meeting by the DPW director that, I think it's fair to say, the roadways are largely completed, pending a few final checklist or punch list items, and the layout plans appear to be well underway. So, this evening, it's residents' hope that you will, in fact, vote to place an article on the spring town meeting warrant that will be acted upon, and if passed by two-thirds vote at town meeting, will authorize you to complete the process of taking the roadways.
Do members have any questions?
Have town council seen the proposed article?
Yes, you sent it to our town council also.
He was copied on the email that I sent the day after the last meeting. I did not hear back, but he was copied on that.
The residents also submitted a citizens petition. If you notice on that one article, there's actually two warrant articles on the subject. And they're identical. Refer to 20, 21, and 22. 22 is the citizen petition, 20 and 21 are Board of Selectmen sponsor. My recommendation would be, since we also have another warrant article on the same warrant, Article 19, which is asking to do the same thing by eminent domain, that's also a citizen petition, my recommendation would be that we let the citizen petitions 19 and 22 go forward on the warrant or article as written, and we remove 20 and 21.
Have you seen those citizen petitions?
I have, I did.
Do they accomplish the purpose for which you are seeking?
I believe it does. Yes, it does.
Okay. But there'd be no point in having a duplicate?
I don't believe there would be, no. And for what it's worth, this subject arose on Friday. I frankly left the last Board of Selectmen's meeting under the impression, and perhaps it was a misimpression, that the board would sponsor an article, but I did have a conversation with the town manager last week wherein he sort of wasn't necessarily of the same mind or questioned whether that was the case, so somewhat in haste.
Well, I wasn't of the, I wasn't questioning, and my concern was, I wanted to make it clear to you that if the board declined to do that, your window would have passed because the deadline for submitting articles was last Friday. So, I didn't want you to be in a position where you had said, well... So I didn't want you to be in a position where you had said, well, they didn't sponsor the article and it's too late.
Right.
I was just informing of you of the, the timing issues.
Understood, and I, I appreciate that. So you do have redundant articles before you.
Okay, so we have the petition articles, which must appear on the warrant anyway. Nothing prohibit, the board usually makes recommendations, so the board can make its recommendation on the citizen's.
On the citizen's petition.
As long as you're sure that's going to cover all the bases.
The, the only question I'd bring up is, and we had this at the fall, is they've put both streets together. And I don't know, we had this issue with wildlife in Deerview and Foxwoods whereby one of them didn't meet the criteria and, and suddenly we, we couldn't split them apart on the day. So it's, in my opinion, it would seem to me, the more conservative approach would be to leave them as two separate streets, just for some, there's some tidying up that has to be done. If one street completely adheres to whatever needs to be done to get accepted, it's no longer contingent on both streets and the two can be independent.
But the town moderator can split the article.
Yes, he did split that question. And we did on town meeting for, because one of them passed and the other one didn't. The, the T part passed, but the top part didn't.
Right.
Right, so we did split that article.
Or vice versa.
Okay, so it would appear as though we're on the right course.
Well, it would appear. However...
If you have reservations, this is the time.
I do.
Okay.
They're not grave reservations. However, the, the board did indicate, at least by asking me to draft the article, that it would consider whether or not to put the article on the town meeting warrant. I do believe it is true that if the board doesn't, then the citizen's petition, which as you correctly point out, must appear on the, on the warrant, will be acted and been voted upon. However, from the residents' perspective, I think two things are worth considering. The first is that the selectmen ultimately will vote their intent to lay out the road and sign the order of taking. So you, even if the town meeting votes favorably on the citizen's petition, the selectmen still require to take some action. So frankly, I think on the residents' behalf, it would be nice for them to know that if they expend the monies necessary to go through the process over the months after the town meeting, that the selectmen will, in fact, sign the order of taking and they will have, you know, spent the money wisely and the process will finally be completed. So for that reason, I think it's worthwhile to, for the selectmen to sponsor the article. The citizens can always withdraw their petition article, either, I assume, before town meeting or even on town meeting floor. So, you know, I have to say, it was taken aback a little bit by the notion on, on Friday, although I do appreciate the town manager's consideration of, you know, having this sort of failsafe provision. It would be nice to know that the selectmen supported it.
Well, as far as the procedure goes, though, even if it's a citizen's petition, the selectmen have to vote to lay out the road before town meeting. So that, and if we don't vote to lay out the road, then it will be passed over at town meeting. So it's not a matter of going to town meeting and then approving and then the Board of Selectmen don't vote to lay it out. That has to occur before town meeting.
That's right.
So we would be taking that vote. My concern is, we still haven't seen the form, the formalized documents and they have not been signed by all of the residents. So I think that a vote at this time for the Board of Selectmen to place this warrant article is, you know, we're, I'm still, and as I had stated before, I haven't seen the documents. They haven't been executed by the residents. So, you know, at this point, I'm not comfortable in...
But you have seen the memorandum of agreement by which the residents agreed to...
I did see the memorandum, but there's a difference between a memorandum of agreement and a formal document. And, and I expressed my concern that the document does not tie the property, it's only tying the individuals, when the property is the, the entity that is involved here, not the individuals. They can sell their houses and they can personally walk away and now we don't have any tie to the new owners of those property. And that was, and I expressed the last time, that is my concern in not having it tied directly to the property.
They do however remain personally liable.
And then they can claim bankruptcy.
Pardon?
And then they can claim bankruptcy.
And that's true of anyone that you enter into a...
Including the town.
Right. But, you know, but if it's, you know, attached to the deed, then it runs with the deed.
Okay, I think that's fine. The memorandum of agreement, just to be clear, is the document by which the residents agree to indemnify the town. You made reference to formal documents. The only other documents that they will sign would be in connection with the actual taking, which would be as per the town council's draft, a waiver of appraisal and damages. So the memorandum of agreement is, is the indemnification agreement. But I think it's...
Just for the record, so everyone is clear, the board routinely puts articles on the warrant that haven't been fleshed out. We call them placeholders, where we describe briefly the action to be taken. We don't have all the information on most of these articles, but we hopefully will have that prior to the time we'd have to take the vote. However...
Need for a vote now?
You know, I, I think if, if we have articles already on the warrant that satisfy the need, as Carrie points out, we will be doing the layout and so on and so when we have all this material, which I expect we're going to have it, you know, substantially in advance of the date of town meeting.
Yes.
And, you know, I'll go on record as saying I will, I will support the article because I think we should and I think the residents have done, you know, what they needed to do and I thank them for it. So I don't have any question, your qualms about giving you my, my word that I will support the article unless there's some drastic change that has been hidden someplace, which I don't expect to see.
You, you'll also have to subsequently do an order of taking after town meeting.
Yes.
Carrie, given your question, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you feel this way as well of what happens if someone, you know, leaves and then there's a transfer? Do you feel that there, are there any solutions to that?
You have it run with the, right. You attach it to the deed and when the timeframe expires, it expires also. I mean, yes, it's a permanent record when you do a deed search, just like every mortgage you've ever pulled on your house and every home equity is permanently there, but that doesn't infringe anybody else from coming in and buying your house. They'll just see how many home equities or mortgages that you've pulled. But they expire and they go ahead and they file paperwork that clears them. This would be the same thing. At the end of the expiration period, based on the agreement, you know, there would be paperwork that would file that say this is no longer there. Same thing as a contractor's lien is put against your property.
So how do you think it could be, could be changed so that it, it would accommodate that?
As we originally...
Other ways that we could do to modify it?
Well, as we originally stated, that it would run with the property, not with the individuals, that they're, they're agreeing to put the temporary lien on the property in the event that this occurs, where they actually have to pay out costs.
And is that something that was discussed with the residents as well?
It was, and I do stand by what I said at the last meeting and what, according to the town manager, the town council has agreed with, that if I could paraphrase town council's opinion, that the fact that the memorandum of agreement is not recorded is no, in and of itself is no reason for the town not to proceed. I do, again, stand by what I said at the last meeting. There are concerns that arise from the sort of unusual or atypical nature of the document. And I think at the end of the day, the residents have done all they reasonably can to, to ensure that the town's financial risk is minimal by agreeing to both pay for the town's costs in completing the eminent domain and agreeing collectively to indemnify the town. So, you know, the ultimate goal in terms of process and timing, you know, is certainly to get an article on the town meeting warrant for this spring. And if you conclude that the citizen's petition is the best route and that you'll withhold voting on the article that was proposed for your sponsorship, I think that's fine. The residents are satisfied with that.
It's hard for me to, to visualize a, a real financial risk to the town. After all, we're improving the property in every way by having it a public way. So...
My problem...
Wherein lies the liability?
I got a problem. What other street do we do this for? That's my problem with it.
Say it again?
Which, which other street do we do this for?
I don't know. Why, why is that relevant?
That's my problem.
So we shouldn't do it?
Not necessarily shouldn't do it. I just said we never, we've never done it before.
I anticipate other streets will come forward as, well, I think we've seen by the citizen's petition, that others will also be approaching this. It's that, you know, and I think that that's why, I agree with you. I, I don't have an objection to exploring the path of the eminent domain, but I think that to understand if the, the residents have agreed to pay this bill, but if for whatever reason they can't or they don't pay the bill, then the town is then responsible for paying the cost. And we, what is our recourse then to turn around and take the citizens to small claims court to get the money?
And what is the bill? What is the bill we're going to be presenting?
We don't know. We, we don't know. We already have attorney fees. We have already racked up attorney fees.
But that has nothing to do with anything.
Well, at this point, shouldn't we keep then all three articles on there so we can give time to get our questions answered? That's appropriate?
That won't help because...
I don't know. I don't see that possibility.
There is no black and white solution.
Doesn't, doesn't, isn't addressed by that. Carrie's argument stands whether we put it on the warrant or not.
True.
Right?
Yes, yes. I, right. I, I don't, correct. I don't see a reason why the board should be sponsoring this. We have two, we have a citizen's petition, we have another citizen's petition for a street. I think that they should run a citizen's petition and it's not as broad.
But even if we did it, your, your questions would still remain.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes.
That's the issue.
Yes.
Two comments. One, back when this first came up in January and we sat and we asked Attorney Knappick to go out and get write this agreement, we definitely led them down a path that we would support this. So the fact that we are, we are now flip-flopping...
No, we're not. No.
I have, I have an issue with it.
Not from the start.
Secondly, we, our job is to mitigate as much risk as possible. I don't think we will eliminate all risk. If the whole neighborhood goes bankrupt and everyone forecloses on their house, it's a real situation, right? The likelihood of it becomes much smaller as we move forward with this. We have to be able to assess that risk and, and move forward. We're not going to get it down to zero.
And that's life, isn't it?
It's life.
Right.
That's how the Mercedes bends.
And just, I was the one who put forward this idea. And the intent was, is that, yes, it would be hooked to the deeds. And that was, you know, and I don't have a problem with it moving forward in that way. Attorney Knappick came back to our last meeting and said that the residents weren't comfortable with putting on the deed. They wanted to have it just as a memorandum of agreement. That's where, wait a minute, that's not what we put forward, or I put forward as the option here for us to explore. The intent wasn't for to run on the property, not to be something that's just an agreement that doesn't have any, as you say, to eliminate risk. To me, it's not a balanced risk at that point.
So for the record, you asked for it, not town council?
Mr. De Batista?
Yes.
Could you come up to the, to the podium, please, so people at home can hear you?
I just want, Madam Chair, Peter De Batista, 45, Jacomo Way. So for the record, town council sent the email to Attorney Knappick asking for this put on the deed. It was your recommendation, not town council's?
I proposed the idea, yes. Now, whether town...
To town council?
No, I never spoke to town council. It was a discussion we had here at the table.
And, and then...
And the board, you then proceeded with that and town council came to his opinion. I'd never spoke to town council on this. I threw it out as an option.
I don't think that's relevant. Remember that the key here, the residents are jointly and severally responsible.
Yes.
So if Peter Bagdeseering, if I were in that group, said I don't want to pay, then my, my neighbors and friends are going to have to pick up my share.
Exactly.
Okay? Putting something on the deed doesn't get you the money.
Then why not put it on the deed?
Well...
What's the...
It, it doesn't get you the money.
It's no guarantee.
You know, you have a lot of things recorded.
But it's, it's a little bit more by into, well, you know what it does get you, Peter? Then when you sell this house, it runs with the property. So if, within the three-year, correct me if I, it was three-year time fair that we were putting on this, correct? Any expenses that came up within a three-year period?
The, the eminent domain statute says that any party that contests the award of damages has a period of three years from, I believe, the recording of the order of taking to bring an action for damages. I, I do want to point out, though, that, that the memorandum of agreement, at least in its present form, is not recordable. Documents have to follow a certain format in order to even be accepted for recording at the registry of deeds, as you probably know. And the reason for that is because, you know, quite honestly, I was asked to draft, you know, something in writing that confirms that the residents will indemnify the town. I don't know what something in writing is. Could mean any number of things. I suppose to one person, it could be, you know, something on my letterhead saying the residents agree to indemnify the town. But I thought about it and assumed that that wouldn't be enough, enough, nor should it be. So I took the time and effort to draft the memorandum as you first saw it. Only after I had submitted it did, you know, I learned that it was going to be reviewed by town council and there were other issues. In addition, the memorandum of agreement in its present form, even if it were recorded, it doesn't have any sort of, you know, covenants or promises that are akin to a mortgage. So I don't think that it's, it's an individual promise by each of the signatories to collectively, jointly and severally indemnify the town. But I don't think it's anything that, for example, the town could foreclose on if, if an individual resident, you know, didn't, didn't honor the agreement. So first, my point is that recording that document doesn't, I believe, I don't believe, give the town any greater authority or rights than it would have if it were not recorded. And the reason for that, again, is because we were never asked to draft it in recordable form. But nonetheless, I think, you know, the point is, is that's important to the town, is that the residents collectively agree to indemnify the town.
And that's worth a lot more than something on an individual deed or all the individual deeds. And again, what is the actual risk? I don't, you know, I don't see it.
Well, I, I don't hate to rehash what we've discussed, but, you know, of course, I'm going to agree with you that we've said from the outset that in order for, say, a lender to prevail in an action for damages, they would have to prove that the, the value of their mortgage was somehow less, less after the strip of roadway was taken than before. And in order to do so, you know, it sort of defies common sense. I think it would be a difficult thing to prove for many reasons, not the least of which is that, you know, owning, as the residents know, owning that strip of roadway carries with it an obligation to maintain it and that costs money. If you strip away that cost, then the value of the resident's property, the value of the mortgagees' interest is, is greater. So again, that's been our contention all along. And a final word with regard to the issue of precedent, you know, I can understand that there may be an initial concern or reaction. However, you know, in my considered opinion, there's no legal precedent that the town... That's your opinion. ...invites upon its, well, I would invite you to, to consult with town council, but there's no, in my opinion, there's no legal precedent, there's no legal obligation by the town, by the Board of Selectmen to, to do this again. I think, as was mentioned last meeting, each, each case stands on its own. Facts and circumstances of each case are different. There may be a case where eminent domain isn't the right solution. But we hope you agree that in this case it is.
So as the board will be being asked tonight, later on, we've got to address the warrant articles.
Correct.
Address those, I think separately. But right now, if I understand what they're asking us is, are we going to stand behind our statement from January, which is to support the taking of the appropriate land via eminent domain?
That was part of, maybe that was your statement and Peter's statement, that wasn't my statement.
Okay. So what we're being asked tonight, though, regardless, so understand.
I don't know what he wants, he wants, but, you know, I'm just telling you.
What is, what is the action that the board's being asked to take right now?
What are you asking us to take? I guess that's...
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
This evening?
Yes.
Well, I understood that I was coming here to, to ask you to vote to sponsor, for, for the board to sponsor the article or articles to take the roadways. As I said, only last Friday did the issue of a citizen's petition arise. It's been properly signed, properly submitted. So the board is unwilling to sponsor the article, then I think the residents have achieved what they wanted to in terms of timing and mechanics, which is getting the article on town meeting warrant for the spring. So I don't think there's any action for you to take if you're unwilling to sponsor your own article.
And someone with history... And someone with history, what I can recall, I only remember seeing street acceptances as citizens petitions. Have they ever been provided another way on the, on the annual warrant?
Crown and Eagle was done by, sponsored by the board.
I'm sorry, what?
Crown and Eagle was sponsored by the board.
That was the one that we already owned, though. We were doing, we were tiring up a paperwork issue on Crown and Eagle.
Well, it, it wasn't.
I'm referring to ones that are private, you know, under the, the same idea. They're, they're private ways. I understand, but the Crown and Eagle, everyone thought it was a public way. We discovered in the process that it had never been accepted correctly.
Well, there's certainly no, no issue with the board sponsoring such an article and probably most streets are accepted in most cities and towns sponsored by the government agency rather than, than by citizen petition.
It wa, it was a normal course, if my memory serves me correctly, that once the subdivision was completed, that was intended from the inception to be a public road and the road has met the, you know, standards and so on and so forth, that the, either the planning board or the Board of Selectmen put an article on to accept the road as a public road. I think it's just recently that we have this, a lot of this being done by citizen petition. And generally, if you recall, if we're trying to meet the timeline, get the petition on there and hopefully we can get all this stuff in and so forth. That's been the recent, recent issue.
Well, so at this point, I think then we would move to, our decision will be made under the, the agenda item of where we act to endorse the spring annual town meeting warrant in these specific articles.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Does the board agree with that?
Well, if we do that, then these people are going to feel constrained to sit until.
Well, the other option is, do we, do we want to move and, and discuss these three articles right now and vote on sponsorship and inclusion of
Sure.
twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Also, I'll make a motion that the board sponsor Article twenty, street acceptance for Anthony's Way on the town warrant.
Do you have a second?
Now, that one covers.
That's Anthony's Way.
Just Anthony's Way.
Okay, okay. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no.
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the board sponsor Article twenty-one, street acceptance for Jackamaway.
Um, I'll, I'll second it, but would you drop the article number and just give the, the street?
Yep.
Because.
It may change.
It may change, right.
We need to change these numbers.
Absolutely. So I'll make a motion to sponsor an article on the town warrant for street acceptance for Jackamaway.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
If I sponsor, you need to sponsor the second copy of that.
Okay. Uh, if it pleases the board, I'd like to move to a topic under new business, because I know there are also people here in the audience. If I can get an idea, though, of, the people in the last row, what are you here for? Landry Lane as well? Okay, perfect. Okay. So if we can move to the new business discussion action, Landry Lane, court settlement, public slash private way. Would you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, now, we all have received voluminous information from Jackie Norberg and. Mike, do you want to do a summary for the board of where we stand with this?
Well, having gone through the files, yes. There was, I guess, a long history of discussion with Board of Selectmen and we've been given some materials that show at various times the board has looked at Landry Lane and determined it to be a, determined its belief that it was a public way, because obviously the board cannot, cannot make it a public way that has to go through town meeting. Subsequently, I believe it was around two thousand and five, there was a request for an A and R. The planning board at that point expressed the opinion that it was not a public way and therefore denied the A and R. The Norbergs appealed that decision and that created the, the current litigation. And it's gone through a cycle. It's been, they have prevailed at the trial level. The, the town, although we were the, the ones that initially served, one of the other residents of the streets, the Stephanics, have taken, took over the litigation because they also believe it's a private way. We have taken a passive role in the litigation, but we continue to be a party.
What do you mean? Can you explain passive?
Well, they've, they've, we have joined in their, their, um, they've supplied the attorney and essentially, you know, our, our attorney has taken a relatively passive role. They prepared the paperwork. We have simply signed on to it.
So does that, if you can just clear this up for me, because what my understanding of it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that the town was going to be by passively acting in this, it, it put us sort of in the position that if the courts were asking a question or if, if there was someone from the town that needed to testify to any history.
There are certainly times when we had to be there, yes. But.
But is this a more active role then that the town is taking?
Um, not, not really at this point. The, the appeal is going to be filed by the Stephanics attorney, but we, we have filed an appearance earlier and we will be joining in the appeal.
Okay.
Let me just make a little correction.
Okay.
The, the town did vote on Landry Lane back in the seventeen hundreds.
Yes.
And then in the eighteen somethings. And it was laid out and so forth. Now, if, did you all read the judge's decision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There were some questions on what, where and what Landry Lane was at that time.
That's exactly right. But the basic issue before the judge was the issuance of the, of the refusal of the planning board to issue the A and R, subdivision approval not required. And the judge examined very clearly, and if you read his opinion, you'll see that, the whole history of Landry Lane and the extension therefrom and so forth. The argument was made that the layouts, seventeen, whatever it was, eighteen something, didn't match exactly the current position of Landry Lane. The judge gave all the testimony, cited the testimony, he said a, a, um, title examiner testified, and she said, well, it doesn't exactly, and the judge listened to the title examiner. The judge listened to John Andrews, who was a surveyor, and he gave his testimony. And the judge said he gave greater credence to John Andrews, a surveyor, because he actually looked at the land and surveyed the land with his father years ago. The title examiner is looking at a piece of paper. The judge also noted that the original laid out, layout refers to the road between two stone walls, and he noted the stone walls are still there and so forth. So he came to the conclusion that Landry Lane is a public way.
Not all of Landry Lane.
Not, not that. We're only talking about the parts under here.
Right.
So he said, it's a, the potted issue is a public way. And the issue before the judge was whether the planning board properly declined to issue the A and R. The planning board's decision was based upon their assumption that it was not a public way. And the judge said, I find that it is a public way. And he said, planning board, you have to look at this again and make a decision that's consistent with my ruling that it's a public way. You may still perhaps be able to say, we won't issue an A and R. But you can't do, make the reason for that decision, the fact that it's not a public way, because the judge ruled it's a public way. Now, insofar as the appeal goes, it's hard for me to understand how someone is going to argue, because in the appeal, you have to show that the judge made a mistake. You have to say he made a mistake here. Well, I don't where the, I don't know where the mistake is going to be.
Well, but that's, that, and that's a very important point, that, you know, and the two points I want to make is, when you're saying Landry Lane being a public way, only a portion of the road, the judge said, only eight hundred and sixteen plus feet was Landry Lane. The extension above that.
Is a public way.
No. A way in existence, which is different, okay?
Away, yes.
It's not a public way then. So that's why, you know, I don't know how the superior, um, how the appeal will work in the process of, did the judge interpret that correctly? You know, there's all different factors there. And I think that the important point is, is the fact that this is an ongoing litigation. And I don't see where this is an issue before the board, when we are in the middle of the litigation, that, to all parties, I don't think we should be acting on it. It's an appeal. And for that reason, I think we need to leave it in the appeal process, because we're not the court, and whatever decision the court makes, when that process is finished, then we can make a dual, an action then.
The normal course of action is.
What about the decision that's already been made? Shouldn't we be withholding that?
It can be repealed.
Of course it can, but shouldn't we be withholding?
No, not in civil litigation, not in town.
It's already been ruled upon and then whatever the appeal decision is, then support the decision of the appeal.
It was the town's decision that it was a public way. There are letters on file, it's in the record, you got it from the judge, where the DPW says it's the public way, we're going to be fixing it, we're going to be doing this and this and this and this and this, okay? All those things. So for us now to say that we're going to take the position that it's not a public way, it, it doesn't make any sense at all. Why would we spend any money on this? It's beyond me.
It's not that we're not saying it's a public way. What we're saying is it's still in a decision for the court. There's an appeal process. And until that is rectified, just like the planning board won't make a decision until the appeal process.
That, that's a twenty-day period. They don't say it's going to be, things can be before the appellate court.
For years, correct. It can be, right, and in most cases, towns do not act until the appeal process.
Long time. And. That's not. No.
They have that option. Yes, they do.
That's not the case.
No pending stay.
Somebody, it's up to somebody to go to court and tell the judge.
And there's nothing that says the town has to act either.
Well, we have a judgment from Superior Court.
We're not in court. It's not our, it's not our jurisdiction. Planning board.
Wait a minute now. You can't distinct, make a distinction between the planning board of the town of Oxbridge and the town of Oxbridge. The planning board is.
No, Board of Selectmen. We're not the Board, we're not the City Board.
If I can read page fifty-five.
Introduce yourself first, please.
I'm Jackie Norberg. I live on Landry Lane, forty-sixth Landry Lane. Henry Lane had sent a letter. And ba, basically, it's town's responsibilities for Landry Lane in view of Judge Tucker's decision in the reference litigation. We understand that the individual defendants have filed an appeal of the judge's decision, but generally, the effectiveness of a judgment is not stayed pending appeal unless a party expressed a request to stay. To our knowledge, as of today, which I called Henry Lane's office today, none of the parties have requested a stay pending appeal. Therefore, we anticipate that the town will fulfill its responsibilities with regard to maintenance of the public portion of the way, including snow removal pending further court order of the court. That is, that's exactly what it is. There is no stay. So, and I asked Henry very specifically, can you explain this to me? And he said, the way to explain it is, you have to fa, you have to follow what the judge has told you until it's overturned. As of right now, that is not overturned, whether there's a pending appeal or not. That is the order.
And if you don't want to file it, it's up to us to go and say, Your Honor, we don't, we want to stay on this order pending appeal. We haven't done that. Now, there's nothing that is wanting to be done right now, by the way.
Yes, she wants us to do snow and ice.
There isn't any snow and ice. The gods take care of that all the weekend.
Well, no, but that's what you, correct me if I'm wrong. That's what your house means.
When I first came in, when I first started contacting the town manager, it was a week after our first snowstorm. Unfortunately, because the town manager didn't get back to me, this has continued on for this long. Sadly enough. I first contacted him January, my Lisa Nester, my neighbor, contacted him the first week in January. I contacted, contacted him January twentieth was the first time I contacted him. And then this continued on, on a weekly basis, and we got no answers at all. And unfortunately, you know, with the decision that we have and with everything that I have, right now, it is considered a town road.
What is the public portion? Is that the eight hundred and sixteen or is that the?
Eight hundred and sixteen feet, right, the whole.
That and the, the way.
No, the whole, no.
The judge only addressed certain sections of it.
Correct, right. So the whole road hasn't been deemed public. Only eight hundred and sixteen feet of the road.
Well, by this decision.
By this decision.
Right, by the lower bridge.
The panel actually laid out this road, seventeen something, and then the eighteen hundred. But this decision is only germane to that section which covered, covered by the A and R, approval, subdivision approval not required. So they're not going to examine this if the decision is only required for this little section. But all the town records, and you, you, we have copies of all this stuff. There's a town road, town road, town road, town road.
Portion. Because the back portion hasn't been accepted.
Yeah, when does it end? I guess my question is weird to maintain.
Before it gets to your houses, correct?
Eight hundred and fourteen, sixteen feet?
Eight hundred and sixteen feet.
We actually went in front of the judge for the top portion. I don't know if Steve may have a map. We actually went in front of the judge for the top portion. The bottom portion was accepted by the town of Oxbridge in nineteen eighty-eight. It was bonded, constructed by, by the planning board, told, you know, this is how, we want you to construct it. It was bonded and the town accepted that back in nineteen eighty-eight. So what happens is you have the top part and then the bottom part attaches. This part is a town road.
Which is what the, the judge defined. The Superior Court judge found that the first eight hundred and sixteen point seven five feet of Landry Lane was a public way and found that the remainder of Landry Lane was not a public way, but only a, quote, way in existence, end quote, at the time subdivision control law was adopted by the town of Oxbridge in nineteen fifty-nine. The Norbergs' home and the home of the Nesters, also residents of Landry Lane, are located well beyond the first eight hundred and sixteen point seven five feet of Landry Lane.
Mm-hmm. And on page forty-nine, he says, concerning Landry Lane extension, I fi, find a way was in existence at least to the furthest westerly boundary of Lot Parade. You put that, that's on his page forty-nine.
Right, but a way. He doesn't define way in what it is, so it could, a way within the word can mean, it's just, doesn't say public. He didn't define it as a public way, so it could be private.
Right. It was accepted as the town road as a town road. I have that paperwork if you want to see that. It was, that's already a town road. That's why we didn't need to go in front of the ju, judge for it. Because it's already a town road. The bottom part is already a town road. In nineteen eighty-eight, that was done, about bottom part. Well, actually, seventeen ninety-eight, he redid it in nineteen eighty-eight.
Doesn't necessarily mean it's not a public way. It means it's a way in existence.
But the judge distinguished the difference between a public way and a way in existence.
Because he was addressing.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I do.
He's making a decision based on what's in front of him, which only concerned a certain section of the road. The rest was not germane to the decision.
Any other questions for?
No.
Ms. Norberg at this point, because there's, there's someone in the back. Mr. Mead, you'd like to speak as well? Okay. That's all right. I'll find, I have my paperwork. I can find these, anyway.
That's all right, I'll find, I have my paperwork, I can find it anyway.
Hi, Steve Stefanic, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of my family, Stefanic residence, and I just wanna be certain that the, the board has received a letter that our council had sent in earlier today. He got in an accident and was unable to attend.
Who did?
So, uh, he sent in a, a letter as well as some supporting documentation. Did everyone receive the letter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, in the letter, he does mention that eight hundred and sixteen point seven five feet of Landry Lane was, um, found to be a public way, and the remainder, uh, was not a public way. And he also submitted documentation that was previously here, uh, from town council back in two thousand and five. And the first date of May of twenty-fifth of two thousand and five indicates that it is town council's opinion that Landry Lane was not found to be a public way in two thousand, again, May twenty-fifth, two thou- two thousand and five. There was additional information submitted after that decision was, was, uh, made, to see if town council could then look at the additional information that was submitted on behalf of the Norbergs, and based on the additional information submitted, again, um, town council, who was, who's, it's, uh, Land Court Judge Judith Cutler, who was town council at the time, and it was her reviewing the additional information, which did not change her opinion of what Landry Lane was, and finding that it was not a Landry, was not a public way. And that was in two thousand and five. So I wanna make sure that all that information was received by you folks, as well as, um, a letter that came to, uh, my uncle...
Just a minute, just let me interrupt, before we get off this letter.
Okay.
How did, uh, a land court judge named Judith Cutler, is also town council, how did that come about?
No, she was town council at the time, she's now a land court judge.
Okay, she's now a land court judge?
Yes, but at the time, she was council.
Okay.
And then the last piece I just wanna speak about briefly is the fact that, um, there was a letter sent to, uh, my family stating that we were responsible for maintaining the subdivision, which it really was not a subdivision, and that letter came in August of two thousand and eight from the Board of Selectmen. So, we just wanted to point those pieces out at this point, and hope you take that into consideration when you're making the decision.
Do you have a copy of that last?
I don't think...
Which letter?
The Board of Selectmen letter.
In regards to, we were supposed to plow it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have one copy, and I'm probably gonna need to get a copy back.
the town to join the appeal process?
Simply because it was, that was the position that the, the planning board had taken. Typically, we, there was a field goal, and we, we did, uh, we did join in.
Mike didn't know the history of the road, you know, he just didn't know.
Not at the time, no.
Um, now it's all there.
Right.
But there are plenty of people in the Town of Oxbridge who have all this history, who, they're still around, living and breathing. Um, you know, what we need is for one of the active parties to go to court and say, "We'd like a, a stay of execution of this order pending appeal," or, "We want an order, you know, directing the Town of Oxbridge to, um, act," but the judge already, it, the, the judge's order to the Planning Board was, that they make a decision consistent with his decision. They don't have to issue an A and R.
Oh, we're sharing.
They can find perhaps some other way to say no, but they can't find a reason to say no as being, "It's not a public way." And you, you don't go to appeals court to get a different decision, you go to appeals court and say, "The judge made a mistake here." You know, "He made an error in law." Uh, not that I, I'm unhappy with the outcome, and I want another shot at the, at the apple, or whatever the case may be.
I just have a couple of little things.
Those went out in connection to the, when we did the snow policy. When we did the road, right, that was when we adopted the whole, these letters were signed.
Yeah, Jill didn't know anything, so, I mean, it's not her fault, she just didn't know anything.
Just a couple of things, um...
Well, she did, I mean, she did research here, that's not a fair statement, but she...
Yes. Um, and their opinion letter that they talked about, if you look on page thirty-six of your packet that I gave you, this same lawyer who gave her opinion retracted part of her opinion, and I don't think that's a piece that he, Stephen had just told you. Um, if you look, when town council looked at all this information, one of the specific things they looked at was her letter of March second, nineteen ninety. Then on February twentieth, nineteen ninety-seven, she basically says, "I am not aware of the seventeen ninety-eight layout." So she would, she did not have all the information, sorry. And I gave that to you in your packet. So she was not aware of everything. So when town council sent his next opinion after that, he put, "The documentation is not sufficient to allow definitive opinion from town council." That is on page thirty-seven of the information I gave you. Um, concerning the end part, which a couple of you have, I have letters from the Planning Board, the bond, and when the Town of Oxbridge, Landry Lane has been completed to the town's specification, and the bond can be returned, Larry Bumbara accepted the town, that part of the road back. All that information I also have, and that's not the top, that's at the bottom. And that part is already a town way, and the town accepted that.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to instruct the tan, the town manager to maintain Landry Lane as a public road, as per the Superior Court judgment from Judge Tucker.
So just the first eight hundred and sixteen feet? Because the Superior Court judge only says the first eight hundred and sixteen feet.
Hi, David Norberg, forty-sixth Landry Lane, Jackie's husband, carried the, I mean, the lower portion was accepted, so it was already a public road. They were questioning the top.
The top, it wasn't the bottom.
Okay, so if you accept the first eight hundred and sixteen feet...
I'm just answering to her motion.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'm clarifying for you, okay?
It's already a town road.
So, I guess, lady chair person, I would ask you to maintain the whole road, the portion that the judge had ruled on, and then the portion that the town accepted, had already accepted.
Okay. We're gonna amend the motion to, I entertain a motion to...
And I have that paperwork.
Vote and instruct the town manager to maintain Landry Lane as a public road, as per the Superior Court judgment from Judge Tucker, in addition to the way of existence that was approved in, give me the year.
The part down here is nineteen eighty-eight.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
And I have that paperwork.
I'll second it, providing you make reference to the judge's decision, the date, the decision rendered, such and such.
And that was dated August twentieth, two thousand and ten. I'm entertaining it.
All right, I second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Abstain.
Actually, I, I'll change that to an abstention. And I'd just like the record to note that I, um, feel that it's a pending case, therefore we shouldn't be ruling on this until the case is closed.
One, one point of clarification, by maintaining, the provided winter maintenance, and there's a good deal of reconstruction that's needed on that road, would the board want that to commence, or wait till the...
No, that will take its normal course, it's, you know, it'll take its place in the queue.
It's an entire road paved?
We're not establishing any special priority.
Does that mean we have to go unpaved the second half of the road?
It was somewhat...
It was all paved at one point, but unfortunately, because of, um, letting it go for so long, um, I know Ben Sherman has taken a ride down there, um, because, one of, when you drive in, after you drive in for, I don't know, maybe thirty, thirty feet?
I've heard of it, probably.
Oh, okay. And then, as you go in, there's a few pretty large potholes, um, you know, and we're not asking the town to come down and pave it tomorrow, we're just asking, just, you know, just so it's passable, y- you know, just so it's passable for us. And, yeah, there is some tar, but then, of course, there's spots where there is no tar because of the plowing, and, you know, the sand, and, you know, everything else.
It sounds to me as if there'd, there'd be an agreement that could be reached, you know, with your guidance and with Ben's input as well, Norbergs, of, of what could be done immediately to, to fill the...
I'd like to note, though, there's a lot of roads in town that are, that people are actually traveling on more than, no disrespect to, you know, we have, we have, we have town roads that are not paved right now, and I, I don't understand where, in the respect of this, this has priority over other roads that could be fixed, that are a lot more traffic on them. Additionally, we also have town roads that, because of their condition, we have actually blocked them, and you can't pass down them. Half the way is a good example.
I'm not saying that this has a priority to be paving, just to fill in the potholes at this point.
I would argue, there's enough, there's a, even then, that's asking too much.
Even then, even then, I was saying, it has to take its turn.
Right, exactly, that, there's, there's other roads in town that need their potholes filled also.
So, um, should the motion be amended to say specifically what the maintenance is going to be, or leave it to the town manager's discretion?
Just that, you know, it's been deemed to be a public way.
A public way.
Which was the position of the town, and it will be treated as a public way.
Correct.
No better or worse.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's not my discretion, I, this is something that's in the, in the discretion of the Director of Public Works.
Correct. Ben, did you wanna, oh, Ben?
Can I make a statement?
Of course.
I own the property.
Of course you may.
Okay. First of all, we had a...
I'm sorry, can you tell us who you are, please?
Henry Stefanic.
Thank you.
First of all, we had Dave LaValle, an engineer, surveyor, from Sutton, survey this thing. It's altogether different than the piece of property that Mass-Elected New England Power owns, that's where the original house was, that's where the road started. It's not where it is now, it's altogether different. It seems like everybody's got their, uh, sights on one house, but it's not, they had two houses up there. We've got all the, the information, the fires of the house, somebody stole all the information from the fire department, the original, the original, when we started this. Another thing, uh, they, they, when they made a decision here, they, they set the road from, uh, from Aldridge Street, the eighteen oh five layout, it's Aldridge Street. We had that all surveyed and, uh, documented. So it's, the decision that was made through these boards is all wrong, because they got wrong information. Like you said, wh- what you gotta do is do something to these people, and bring the information here, it's wrong, it's all wrong. So, I don't know how anybody can make a decision.
Do you have copies of the information that you're speaking to?
Yes, I have, I got all of that, I got all of that information. But it's, it's, it's a shame that our lawyer can't be here, he got a car accident, so he didn't wanna even discuss it, because it's in litigation, it's still in court.
Mm-hmm.
Like you said, we, none of that, it's true, all of this stuff they brought, and wha- whatever was made before, it's on bad information, wrong information, it's lies. So I can show you everything, if you need to see it.
Okay.
Like I said, and then what, you, you guys are gonna repair it, how wide is this road? There's no, if, if, if it's gonna go with, with the, uh, uh, two rods, well, the road's on our well, it's right on top of our well, so you gotta, somebody's gotta do something with that, too. I don't know what you're gonna do.
How is the road on your well, if it's two rods wide?
Because this road was put there, we already had our well there. This, this road was put there, this, all of these, uh, these, uh, decisions and everything, I don't know where the say came from. The road is supposed, usually, on the only other side of the house. Where that layout right now is, it's not a public way, that's only a right of way. That seventeen ninety-eight map, that seventeen ninety-eight layout, it's not what's there now. Stone walls were taken down. You can see, I can show you where National, uh, uh, New England Power, Department of Public, they got there, you, you gotta say that, they lied, their surveyor lied, that's where the wall was, that's where the mount, the boundaries are, that's all changed. They even used it. John Andrews even used that conus to move the road. I got aerial views to see what they did, it's all in the swamp down there. I got aerial views, I had aerial views taken before they moved in there.
All, all those things were litigated in the court actions, so that, I mean, we can't readdress those things.
Hi, Cindy Bligh, seventeen Blueberry Lane, I formerly a Stefanic, I lived on Landry Lane also, and, and it just in addition to all those things that they're saying, because I agree with clearly my family's side, but the same thing, as Carrie was just saying, with regard to that being a private road, I live on Blueberry Lane, no one comes and plows my road, no one comes and does things like that. If they start taking care of Landry Lane, I know I'm gonna come forward and ask why they're not plowing my street, why they aren't taking care of my street, I, I fall in potholes every single day getting down my road, so, I mean, if that happens, if this goes through with the case with Landry Lane, why wouldn't I bring it forward with my road?
I don't know where to start. How about your name? Ben Sherman, Department of Public Works. I'm not even really sure why I'm here tonight, other than to hopefully try to shed some light on something. I guess from my perspective, all I wanna know is, do we, or do we not, as the Department of Public Works, have to provide any kind of maintenance on this road? Is it a public way, private way? Either way, we'll do what we have to do, uh, with respect to performing maintenance on this road. Um, I, I don't think you can, in good faith, put the onus on the town manager to direct me to do specific maintenance on this road. Um, you know, I, it's, it's not fair to the other roads in town to bump something just because. Um, I mean, I'm currently working on a pavement management program to prioritize the most efficient and best use of the monies, the minimal amount of monies that we get from the state. Um, those monies are all we get for road maintenance in Oxbridge, so, you know, I, I hate to burst some bubbles, but it's not a worst-first mentality. Um, so I'm trying to do my best to best serve the residents of Oxbridge, and put that money to its best use, and it won't always be to the, the worst roads.
I agree, and I was inaccurate in making that statement.
Right, so, um, the condition of the road, it's in bad shape. Um, you know, there's portions of it that are washed out, there are portions of it that are, I'll just call it loosely paved, uh, I know, just from going off of memory, the cul-de-sac is completely unraveling, um, and there are very large potholes. Uh, I wouldn't even call them potholes, I'd call them very big depressions, um, that without some large vehicles, it's very difficult to circumvent the road. I, I, like I said, I, I just don't know what else to say at this point.
But we, we appreciate all that, and that's why we're not, you know, telling... But we, we appreciate all that, and that's why we're not, you know, telling you, you have to rebuild this road.
Right.
It, it's, it's a public way and it'll join the, you know, many other miles of public way that are in dire need of, uh, maintenance and repair.
Right, correct.
And it's not to get any, you know, you have to make a decision as to how you're gonna allocate your resources. And it's our job to hopefully try to get you an increase in resources.
My concern would be that, given the fact that it's largely been treated as a private way and not maintained, now you've got this giant gap of maintenance that has to be done to get it up to snuff. Like, it would never be accepted if it came up, right?
It won't be up to snuff, no. I mean, it won't be up to.
And in the meantime, you know, if we try to send a plow down that road, is it gonna destroy our equipment and cost us more money in trying to plow it than it will?
Well, the owners, the, the people who live there, they have been paying for a truck to go down there and plow. So apparently the contractors, you know, didn't do that to, to wreck their trucks. So, but.
Guarantee they took a beating.
Huh?
I will guarantee they took a beating because I know the, the town did plow those roads for a period of time.
Yeah.
And they did have problems with plowing the roads because of the condition, which is, is understandable.
It's just ironic that we take some of these new subdivisions and we hold them, you know, to the screws with, with some of the standards we've put them through, right, to get them to agree.
But there are lots of roads in the town of Uxbridge that are in horrible shape, but they are, in fact, you know, River Road is one. It's a public road.
And worse than this road. I mean, the other thing to consider is, you know, if you start fixing this road and the decision of the court gets overturned and it's deemed to be a private way, that needs to be something considered.
And, and to that end, you know, it, it would be prudent, I suppose, to let the appeal work out for that purpose.
I agree.
But their, their primary concern is, I guess probably move now, their primary concern now is, you know, ice.
But is that, given this is the middle of March, now granted, I know there were some snow flurries today, but given that, is that a, you know? The board taking a consideration on this? Why don't we, you know, my recommendation would be to reconsider the motion and take this up when, you know, give it, see if a decision is made by the courts in the next six months.
It would be so refreshing if we could make a decision, take this stuff and put it behind us.
And there's no guarantee that the courts will make a decision in six months either.
No, they're not. No, correct, but, you know, six months from now, you may have a better indication of, you know, it may be the situation where, one, the court could make a decision. The other is that if the condition of the road is as bad as it is, we may be having to make another decision six months from now anyway.
Correct.
Could I make one more statement?
Because the road can't be plowed because it's in such bad condition. Or, or, or is true making a decision to, right, I, well, see?
I plowed some pretty tough areas, believe it or not.
My only concern, Carrie, with bringing that up is, is that recognizing it as a public way and as Ben said, that he's currently working on a pavement plan. If we're, if he's not taking into account that it is a public way and we decide not to make a decision and wait for six months, then what happens at that point if there isn't a judgment? Or, you know, there is a judgment and then that, that Landry Lane hasn't been included in that, in Ben's planning process?
I think that it would be a great error on the part of the town to make any permanent improvement like paving a road when there is a pending court case that could change the outcome of that road. You know, to pave the road and then have the courts overturn it and find that it's a way of existence. I mean, I, I can't see that in the next six months being a situation where Landry Lane should even be up for consideration for paving, honestly, given all the other roads in Uxbridge that need some help right now.
But that's also what Ben indicated is that doesn't guarantee, you know, just because, you know, it is, it is being recognized with our motion tonight as a public way, that doesn't mean that it moves to the top of the list. It just means that it is going to be recognized and that the judgment from Judge Tucker in two thousand ten is going to be upheld.
And, and since the DPW has always recognized it as a public way, as evidenced by the letters, that road should already be in the chapter ninety schedule. So we should already have been, we, we have been receiving.
Monies for that.
Monies for that road, only we, we spent it on other things, lollipops and.
I suggest we hear his last comment and move on to the next.
Yes, I agree.
I just wanted to make sure it was known that when, when this went to court, it was in regards to, from Richardson Street to the turnaround was what went to court, not the first eight hundred and sixteen feet. I don't know if there's any confusion there. So the whole entire piece, it's one court case. It wasn't two separate cases. It wasn't that we went over one, you know, eight sixteen because the other piece was already determined. But the judge could not find any determination to find that the, anything beyond the end of our property, beginning of their property, which is where the eight sixteen point seventy-five feet is, is, he couldn't find that that was ever a public way. That was, it's one case. It's not two separate cases. It seems like people are looking at it as it's two separate cases.
But the case, as, as, as we see it, as evidenced by the judge's decision, was referenced to the A and R. And the A and R covered a particular part of that street.
Beyond this eight sixteen?
The A and, the decision rendered by the judge related to the planning board's decision to refuse to give an A and R endorsement by virtue of the fact that it wasn't considered by the planning board to be a public way. And the judge said, no, you have to go back because I find it is a public way for the, you know, looking at those laws now, the, that the A and R was sought for. And the judge said, you have to make a new decision regarding the A and R that is consistent with my rulings, which was that it is a public way. And now planning board go back and look at it again, maybe you'll find some other reason to deny the A and R, but the reason cannot be the fact it is not a public way.
No, I'm not sure in regards to the A and R, but the public way, I don't know what we're looking at as the width of it, but that is the frontage that is now on their property. It stops it where our boundary lines match, which they're calling a public way, which was formerly Stefannik property. So the width of the road is as wide as the frontage on a public way, according to what I'm reading in the, in the decision. The this, the this, again, the this, it was one, and, and Mr. Roberti had wanted me to point out that this is one case, 'cause it, it's not two separate cases. So there's no, there wouldn't be any frontage based on the town road stopping right where their property began. It doesn't be on thirty feet, twenty, you know, it just doesn't go any further.
An A and R is issued upon a showing that you have the requisite frontage on a public way.
This is a public way.
The judge has said it is a public way.
The house is not on a road, nowhere.
No. I think that we're confusing the facts here because when you look at, Peter, I don't agree with what you're saying. He said there's a section of it that's a public way, but that their, their homes were not on that section of road that was the public way. They were on the section of way of existence. So therefore, go back to the planning board, planning board, you can't consider the frontage on the eight hundred and sixteen 'cause their houses don't abut the eight hundred and sixteen. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
But, okay. So in that, by accepting this as a complete public way, the whole entire road, that's where, that's where I feel that this is not something I think that the board should be making a decision right, right now on, given the facts and the amount of paperwork here, to clearly understand, you know, we're taking bits and pieces to fit into making a decision that the whole thing is a public way. And I don't think we have everything clearly in our minds that the whole road at some point has been clearly viewed by any one body, any one board, any one court, and determined is the whole road a public way. We're taking bits and pieces and trying to put it together. And I think it's a mistake for this board to be making that decision right now.
I'm not making, I'm not doing that. The, the whole road began at, um.
Technically began on the other side of one forty-six, aye?
It went across four, one forty-six, yes.
It didn't go across.
Well, at this point, at this point, the board has made the decision.
It was a long road, but our vote that we took was confined to the judge's decision.
No, it was not. Reread the motion.
Yes, it was.
Reread the motion. It was not confined to the judge's decision. Does he please reread the motion?
All right. Motion by Ms. Pittman to instruct the town manager to maintain Landry Lane as a public road and treat it as a public way per the Superior Court decision dated eight twenty, two thousand and ten, issued by Judge Tucker, in addition to maintaining the way of existence approved in nineteen eighty-eight.
See, it was not just based on the judge's decision.
Well, the, the part was approved, it was approved.
The way of existence in nineteen eighty-eight was not part of the, but that wasn't part of the court's decision.
But we don't have to do that 'cause it's already.
No, it's already been approved.
That was seconded by Peter and the vote was three to two.
But the road in existence is the eight hundred and sixteen feet.
Three zero two.
Three zero two, okay.
The point being, the board has already made our decision on this, um, and I think that we need to move forward if it.
The, and just for the record, I think that the board erred in instructing the town manager as the beginning of that motion says, you're, the board instructed the town manager to maintain that road. I think that that's a danger slope for the board to be making as a motion to instruct the town manager to do that.
Should we instruct the DPW?
Yes, but that's not our job.
Okay.
No, well, if you, we're not, we're not instructing the DPW. The road is to be considered a public way as determined.
You know what, excuse me, you can just get rid of manager and town. Thank you.
You, you need to reconsider the motion. I, I, you need to take a vote to reconsider the motion and then redraft the motion. You just can't change the motion after you voted on it.
So we have a motion reconsider?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the motion should read?
Town.
That the town recognize Landry Lane.
Okay. All right, so motion by Ms. Pittman to instruct the town.
That, that the town recognize Landry Lane as a public way. Per the, was it eight? Twenty, two thousand and ten?
Yeah. And treated as a public way per the Superior Court decision dated eight twenty, two thousand and ten, issued by Judge Tucker, in addition to approving the way of existence approved in nineteen eighty-eight. Seconded by.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Abstain.
I'm sorry, abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
This is when the planning board and the town accepted the bottom half. I don't know if you want copies of these. I know Ben has a copy of it. I don't know.
Ben has a copy, I can get it.
Ben has a copy, okay. Thank you for the offer, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on. Let me see. Is this mine here? All right, so, uh, let's move on to, back to old business, letter D, discussion slash endorse, action endorse, spring annual town meeting vote inclusion of warrant articles unless, are you all here for the?
Um, they're, I believe they're here for the.
Department fee. Okay, so let's move to Eden. Discussion slash action permitting fees for BOS, assessor, planning board, town clerk. And I believe, Mike, you have a recommendation for us as a board to?
My only recommendation to change is I think the, I'm trying to find it in here, the, I think the, I've always thought the fees were too high for the ZBA, that it effectively closes off a right of appeal. That's what, two hundred and fifty dollars file?
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're not on the ZBA, are we?
Which one are we doing?
No, we're doing the, um.
We're selecting the assessors?
Those were.
Assessor, planning board, and town clerk.
That was the one I found.
Right, Adam Tracy.
Onion agendas under old business E, discussion, action, permitting fees for BOS, assessor, planning board, and town clerk. We should probably take the people that are in the audience, like the assessor and town clerk for us, if that's okay.
Who lives furthest away? Okay, let's take her for us so she can go home. Call it rough justice.
Basically, the first thing I'd like to ask is if there are things, we all have the material that, that everyone has submitted, um, if there are things that you'd like to call our specific attention to. Not to overlook anything that you have sent to us, but to speed the process along, if possible.
What you don't have is a survey of fifteen towns that were the charges for a property record card and map. And I would say that all but one of those fifteen do not charge a dollar per card and a, a dollar per map.
What do they charge?
Fifty cents. Fifty cents for a property record card, but if the card is two cards, then it's a dollar.
Now, does that regard those, if it's to the homeowner or just someone else to?
Our records, we'd provide a map and a card free to the homeowners.
Correct.
And if the individual wants to, um, go online, they can print them out themselves and do the map as well as the property record card. Now, that is for a homeowner or a business real estate person, um, that, they can do that for free.
Okay.
The, the ability to access assessor's files from home, your computer for any town, is a tremendous saver for both the individual seeking the information and the assessor's office.
Right.
You know, the, the volume comes from the professionals, real estate agents and, um, appraisers and so forth. And now they can do that at home, or, you know, just as easy. So it saves every, making things efficient is good for everyone.
What, what is your, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I just have a question on the abuddish list and so forth. Does that include the ten dollars that you want to go to eighteen? Does that include the printed labels and so forth?
Um, I didn't want to go to eighteen dollars, no. That's an average of the fifteen towns' charges.
But it says here, fee type, fee, ten dollars.
No, based on ten dollar an hour completely.
And then proposed fee eighteen.
It does include the labels.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, that's a bargain because, you know, there's a lot of work to find out who the abuddhas are within three hundred and the butter two and the butter and so on and so forth. And for eighteen dollars or ten dollars, whatever it is, you get the whole list and labels. So all you gotta do is, you know, it's done. You pay the postage, I guess, right?
Correct.
Can I, can I just understand that? So we, today we charge ten for this and you're proposing eighteen?
I just threw it out there. Uh, of, of the list that you have, we're basically almost the lowest.
At ten.
At ten.
Great.
Oh, this is for, yeah, for you, and it's proposed fee eighteen. So that's what you want.
Well, I'm, I'm, I just threw it out there. I don't want it. You want to keep it at ten, that's fine. It has to be a certified abuddhas list, um, by the way, as well.
Yes.
Homeowners cannot do this from their home and submit it.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Okay.
It seems to me that we don't pay anyone ten dollars an hour if you factor, if you factor in their fully loaded cost of benefits, you know, space, within here, heat, electricity, all that, so I would.
Yeah. Eighteen dollars is. Yeah. Eighteen dollars is, is still a bargain.
Yeah, I don't know what the actual number is.
I'm even wondering, yeah, I mean, if it's based on per hour basis on the lowest salary employees, so, how long does it take to, I mean, in the abutist list, for some it could take, it could take ten minutes to do the abutist list because there's-
That's a counter default. The list is larger, it increases.
Only for ten dollars each hour. I mean, I agree with Jay. Who's making ten dollars an hour? I mean, minimum wage, can't, I mean, minimum wage is eight something, and that's not even covering the additional overhead, so I don't think that ten dollars-
But we, we first have to ask how much time it takes to-
Right.
Get the list. If it takes a long time, then, you know, a, a larger fee is justified.
Right, and, you know, it could take ten minutes, it could take a half hour.
Okay.
When my assistant was out on vacation, I had to do a couple abutist lists, and it was the first time I had done them.
Okay.
It, it took about thirty minutes.
Okay, but-
Because you have to-
Normally, it doesn't take that long.
Correct.
Okay. So at eighteen dollars, that's, you know, thirty-six dollars-
Mm-hmm.
An hour. Um, so it doesn't seem to be unduly low or unreasonably high.
Seems more reasonable.
Tracy, do we have any seasonal, we don't have any seasonal car licenses.
How'd you come up with thirty, if it took her a half hour? It's eighteen dollars. Eighteen dollars an hour, or am I reading this wrong?
Yeah, I know that, but the time, the, the fee is more than just the time, because it, you know, the printing the labels and so on and so forth.
She said that's included.
But that's the cost, the cost associated with print and paper, labels. I'll make a motion to accept the assessor fees as written in the memo from Ms. Dumont dated on-
Just as a-
Which fees proposed, or the, I'm-
I don't know that we have to approve all these things. You know, we have our own fees that we have to vote on, but I don't know that we have to vote on other department fees. The whole point of this exercise, or my initial point in this exercise is to make sure that every department that issues fees understands that it's supposed to be based on the actual cost of doing something, and that periodically they need to be reviewed.
Right.
Sure.
But I don't think that we have to vote on each one of them, because we're not in control of the assessors', um-
Don't we set the fees for the, for the town in general?
No.
Well, in two thousand and seven, I believe this exercise was revisited, and I believe that the, the board felt they had a clear understanding with each department, so I do recommend that you make a motion so it is officially acknowledged that we did have this exercise.
We did accept the fire departments, was it last year or the year before, we did-
They don't have a date, and, and you did a motion.
We did a motion.
So to reaffirm that you have taken time and, and fully acknowledged that.
And understand it, right.
Exactly.
But is that the board's job in general or the town manager's job in general?
Um, I would say it's the board's.
And, and what makes you say that? Is it a guess?
Well, I don't have my handy dandy charter or bylaws in front of me.
Well, bylaws are silent.
We want to take a recess.
Bylaws are si- are silent on that particular thing, um-
Well, we can make them-
I, I think it'd be good technology, and I don't think there's any harm in making a motion.
The, the recommend, my recommendation would be for the motion that, um, that you could consider, Jay, is that, um, the board concurs with the fees that have been-
The recommended fees.
Right, and then that way, all we're doing is giving concurrence, we're not actually approving. But in that also, um, when you say as stated, there's two different fees here, so it would be-
So it should list the abutter, the proposed fee?
Right, so we, we concur with her proposed fee?
Yeah, I was including them all in one, all four of them in, in one fell swoop.
Okay, so the language for all the fees going forward, you could see, could, um, say, um, the BOS concurs with the recommended proposed fees by the assessor's department or assessor's office, or, in each office, as you, as we go through these over the next couple of weeks. Is that-
But it's his motion, so.
Right, so.
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Someone seconded it already?
Nope, you're, you're just in, right?
Okay, seconded.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 But to, to Peter's point, if we don't have to do this for all these, this is, and this is-
No, I agree.
And you can put on the town manager to, to respond before, I would much rather just, you know, just assure that this exercise is being done and, and let Mike handle it in the operations of the town.
I, I guess I would ask him, ask the question, do you consider it a policy matter or not, setting fees, uh, because I think the board should handle questions of policy. If it's, you know, if you consider it an administrative matter, then, then it's appropriately within my scope.
Well-
No, we set sewer rates because we're the sewer-
The policy is that we need to have peri, our policy should be that periodically all rates, all fees charged by the town of Oxbridge should comply with the following standards. Number one, that the fee is based, i- is, is, is based on the actual cost of something, and that the something be done in the most efficient and effective way possible, and that they be re- reviewed periodically. Because otherwise, they're, they're never going to be looked at. And it doesn't have to be every year.
Since we have the town clerk here, can we do hers next?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where would I find it?
Yours is the last two pages?
Yes. There really aren't or shouldn't be any changes that I feel to ours at this point. We anticipate that the state will be actually be changing some of our fees because we're moving into a new, what they call a new vitals information system. Um, there, we're being forced to use security paper, and we're also being forced to use archival paper for the, the copies that we print. They've provided us with a first set of archival paper. We don't know, they actually haven't made a decision yet if they're going to provide all this paper for us, or if we're going to have to take that into consideration later on, but they've also let us know that they will be mandating the fees across the state because it's a statewide system.
And when is that going to happen?
We don't know. It was supposed to happen January first. We got put off until February first, and I got my password last Thursday. So, um, we've seen the first two certificate, birth certificates only right now. They're hoping by the end of the year to incorporate death certificates, um, and then early next year be into the marriage to get them all into the system. Um, but at that point, I would think once they're done, possibly sooner, depend, but birth is the most cumbersome of, of them all. Um, they may be setting the fees once they know that all the birthing hospitals are up and running, as well as the birthing communities. We're kind of secondary to them. We're the, the residence community and, um, printing out the certified copies, you know, isn't as important as getting the original, the live birth certificates into the system themselves, so. Um, but they will be setting the fees, and we haven't had any indication where they're going to go with it yet.
And you also revisited these somewhat recently?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it was three years ago, was prior to me, um, being appointed town clerk, but they were revisited, and we, we, we reduced them at that point. Um, and because of that, we're actually one of the lowest towns now. Um, very comparable, the, the way the structure works with the ten dollars for the first and the three for each additional, um, works out well in the end. We have a lot of the communities around us that charge the ten dollars for each, or even a flat five for each. Well, on five birth certificates, we actually come out a little bit cheaper here. So it, it's, I, I mean, the fees I think are, right now are, are good for us, based on the amount of time it takes for us to get them ready, um, and the paper we use to get them out. It, it's not a huge process, but again, I, we don't know what that's going to be changing to. And, and the same point, we don't know if the state is actually going to want any of that money back, is the other piece.
Don't say that, Kelly.
Well, no, I mean, if we saw what happened at the registry, as far as what they've raised the fees to at the registry, so I can imagine what these fees are going to go to when they go to a state system.
So we can just pass over this?
So good.
The, the idea in, in having a reduced fee for the additional copies is that it really does take a lot of extra work to produce and seal additional copies, and it actually works out better for her staff because people will order extras, knowing that they're getting a discount on the additional ones. Uh, I don't know if you've had someone pass in your family, but you need a ton of death certificates.
That should do it.
And it's really kind of unfair to, to hit somebody for a couple of hundred dollars for twenty pieces of paper. Uh-
I mean, in the-
Beyond that, they'll only buy what they need and then keep coming back, and then you gotta pull the same thing over and over again.
On the same side, it, it reduces a little bit of the foot traffic as well. If they're buying the two or three up front, you're not seeing them once a year when kindergarten or preschool or as they progress through school, and they need that copy for everything. They've, they've picked up a couple of them and keep them on file, so.
All right.
Motion to, um-
I have a question first.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, my favorite, the business certificate.
Yes.
Now, as you, I've had people come to me and said they were told they needed a business certificate even though they're incorporated.
Yep.
You don't.
You don't, not by our standards, you don't?
Yeah.
Banks are now requiring for them to open up business account, checking accounts or, or bank accounts. We can't-
Well, if you have a federal ID number-
Yep.
An O four number, um, you know, that gives you name of the business and so on and so forth, that should cover it.
It's, it, it's, and that's fine with us. We don't require them to, but like I said, the banks aren't allowing them to open up bank accounts. They're literally telling them they will refuse to open up a bank account without a business certificate. It has nothing to do with us.
Tell me where the twenty dollars comes from, because remember, we're not giving them permission to do something.
Nope.
It's just a declaration, my name is Joe Jones, I'm operating a business in a name other than my own.
Yep.
Said name being Acme Enterprises at eighty-two Main Street.
Yep.
Now, tell me where you spent twenty dollars.
Well, it takes, I mean, when they come in-
Yeah.
Where we take a copy of their license, where I did their identification, it doesn't necessarily have to be a license. They're filling, we're filling out the forms with them. Um, the forms have to be signed in front of us or by a notary, so it does take a little bit of time, um-
What forms?
The actual business certificate form itself.
It's a, it, the declaration, there's not, there shouldn't be anything on it except what I related. My name is Joe Jones, I'm doing business as Acme Enterprises at eighty-two Main Street.
Yeah, well, they fill out all their information, they're signing it, we are sealing it, we, they get a copy, we get a copy, we keep a copy, and the building department or the building inspector had also asked us to, like, there's five questions on the back that they want answered.
They have no right to do that. They have no right to do that.
Is this an Oxbridge form?
Yes. Well, the business certificate itself is actually derived from a state form.
Yes.
So it, that's not it.
We have no right to tell people, you have to answer these questions. And that's been a bone of contention for a long time. It makes people upset because they-
I don't think it's on here.
They, they go to the building inspector, he's not there, and so on and so forth. It's not required. So-
Well, my concern is, is we're actually not doing anything to provide a, any legitimacy to their business.
I, I mean, it's, it's mass general law. It's not something that we've come up with here.
It's required. It's required by state law. If you do business in a name other than your own, the idea is if you put up a sign saying Acme Enterprises, there's no person named Acme Enterprises, you don't file with the Secretary of State, if you are corporate, incorporated, or a, um-
No, no, I understand that part of it.
Okay.
But, but we're not doing anything to legitimize-
The fee.
Well, I believe the fee is-
No, all we're doing is taking their name, their, in personal name, the name of the enterprise under which they're operating, um, and their, their address. That's it.
Why do we charge a fee then? I, I, I guess that's my point, why are we charging-
Because there is some work, and we have to file that. We have, you know, there is-
Who do we have to file it with? We file it here.
With the town clerk, yes.
It's filed here and kept on record here.
Yes.
Right, but, so the, I mean, there's a lot of papers we file and we don't charge residents to file. You, you understand my point?
Yeah, there is a little time and work involved when they perform this task.
But if they, if they know how to fill out, if they give you the form and they know how to fill out the form, then you're not involved. All you're doing is handing them the, it's like a dog license. You may help somebody fill out the dog license, but other ones, you don't-
Yeah, it, yeah, we-
Yeah, but we don't charge to notarize.
No, it's a disruption of time, and there's minimum increments. If you're sitting there doing something that you're paid to do when you get disrupted, eh, you know, there's a cost of actually doing the work and it's-
But isn't part of the clerk, town clerk there to the citizens?
That's why lawyers bill at ten or fifteen minute increments, right?
No, no, I understand that, but isn't what the town clerk is, I mean, we don't charge to notarize, which is no different, so I guess my question is, is if we want to be business friendly and we want people to promote businesses in town, then why would we charge a business fee for something that, isn't that what the town clerk is there for? It's my only question.
Well, if this is something that actually is going to be, um, changed, you know, with the, the state mandate-
Well, the business certificate won't be. That's not part of this. It's, the other piece is just vital records, so birth, death, and marriage.
Okay.
I can see ten dollars being just, I can see a justification for ten dollars. I cannot see a justification for twenty dollars.
I actually, if I remember right, under the mass general law, I believe it states that a fee may be charged between the range of twenty and fifty dollars.
Um, when I first looked into this, this goes back three or four years, it said that unless a, a, a fee is set by town meeting, then the fee shall be as described by section twenty-one F, so I went and looked that up, and the fee was one dollar. That was a state fee, a one dollar, unless we specified some. When I showed Mr. Kaplan that state law, he said, oh, uh, I don't, um, I'll have to look into this. And a month went by, and he's still looking into it. Another month went by, he's looking into it. He wasn't looking into it. He was getting ready to put a bylaw in charging the twenty dollars.
Then the snowstorm of seventy-eight hit.
Yeah.
You see?
I do.
Uh, but I've had more complaints from people who said, yeah, they made me go and, and see the building inspector, and I couldn't find him, and he told me, and I said, no, they have no right to do that. And I thought we'd stop that practice, but, you know, bureaucrats do things and it just, that never goes away.
But focusing on the fact that it, that it's a fee, Kelly, if you believe that there's an MGL that, that speaks to what the range should be-
I will, I can definitely look into it.
How about we approve, or, you know, just say that, whatever the terminology is for the first one, with the exception of that, if you can provide us then with the follow-up material.
Sure, yep.
Okay, just one more quick question.
Sure.
This whole list of other things.
All my hunting and fishing licenses?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I've been around for a long time. I've never seen this before. And some, somebody told me it's new.
It is a fairly new list, from what I understand. I mean, we just started doing this in January, so-
It's, it's business certificate, right?
But they're, they're all set by the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife.
So when it says forty-five dollars for the resident citizen sporting, forty-five dollars, uh, then it says, as set by MGL, additional one and a half dollar fee for administrative costs. Now, does that mean the fee is forty-six dollars and fifty cents?
It is.
Okay.
And that's also set by them.
But the forty-five is set by the state.
No, the, actually, the forty-six fifty is. They break it out in their verbiage as the fee for the license, and then the fee that the town clerk is required to take. And then they actually word it a little differently. You're, the way it's worded, and I had Mike look at it as well, we're really required to take the whole dollar fifty.
Okay. But we also, so that, it, there's a forty-five dollars come to us, or does it go to the state?
The forty-five goes to the state.
Those costs.
Yeah.
So they're doing no work-
Yes, and we get the, exactly.
Zero, and they're saying, oh, you guys can, you can take care of this for a dollar and a half.
Take a dollar fifty, yes, exactly.
It's not right. It costs us that to mail the money to the state.
Exactly, you're right.
I think that their, their justification would be that, that money is used for the environmental police to police the hunting.
Well, okay, if that's the case, then-
Regardless.
I assume that the town has no responsibility in, in licensing, I mean, inspecting dog kennels. Is that true, or do we have to do our own inspections?
Well, we're not talking about dog kennels, we're talking about hunting and, and fishing, so you're kind of mixing apples and oranges, Peter, a little bit?
Okay, well, he mentioned dog kennels. Mike, did you make?
No, he didn't.
No.
No. Um, so I made the motion. Do we have a second?
No, Carrie, you can confer, concurs with the recommended proposed fees, with the No, Carrie, you can confer, concurs with the recommended proposed fees with the exception of the business certificate, and she'll follow up. Is that? Okay, is there a second, did you say?
Second.
Thank you.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, just a note separate from, there's quite a few, is this a, a list that goes to the public?
The hunting and fishing?
No, this whole thing. Or did you just prepare this for us?
I prepared that for you.
Okay.
I mean, we do have our fees posted on the website.
Okay, because there's quite a few typos, so I didn't know if.
No, that's not a, that list isn't.
It isn't a public list.
No.
It's just for us, okay.
Peter, how did you vote? Sorry.
I, I didn't. I'm still thinking.
Okay.
And the reason I'm still thinking is because the state is saying it'll take ten minutes and they're going to give us a dollar and fifty cents. And there are six, ten-minute sections. Um, that's not very much. I don't think we're being adequately compensated for our time in doing this. And I think we should let the state know. I mean, it, this, it's a, you know, this appears to be, maybe I'm wrong, but it appears to be, uh, we have to file all these things, copies of all these things?
Of course. Yeah, by the, by the seventh of the month.
No, it's going to take an additional dollar fifty, so we have to tack the dollar fifty onto the fee.
No, I know that, but we get the dollar fifty.
Right, but if we tack it on, like this one, we didn't tack on the dollar fifty. This one, we don't tack on the dollar fifty.
We don't have to do that. I asked Kelly.
No, why didn't we tell you? It says, as set by, this is the fee.
People ask.
Plus the dollar fifty.
So Peter, we don't, we don't have to do this, we're not mandated to do these licenses?
No.
Well, I don't mind doing the license, because, you know, it's a convenience for the, for the residents of the town. I understand that. But I'm, I'm not, I know, I'm just looking for some, some equitable distribution of the fee that people take.
Well, I understand, but we can't go above and beyond that dollar fifty either. They set the limits as well, so.
I know that. I know that. And this is set by state law.
Exactly.
And where do state laws come from? Our reps and our senators. And if we don't make some remonstrance, none of these things are ever going to change, right?
Peter, what is your vote?
And what was the, what was the motion?
The motion to.
Concur.
To concur with them with the exception of the business certificate that Kelly's going to give back to us on. Roughly speaking.
Will the board promise that we will sometime soon invite our reps and senators and let us discuss these and other things with them? Because unless we do that, they're not going to have any reason to make any changes.
That actually was something that I was going to bring up under member issues.
Okay.
Of asking you to take charge of that.
All right, okay, fine.
So.
All right.
What's your vote?
Yes.
Can I just ask one question, just a clarification, though? Um, not to belabor this, but, so is that rate already have the dollar fifty? Because I'm looking at some of the, like, looking at H eight, it's eleven fifty. So was the states charged ten dollars and we tack down the dollar fifty?
No, the state, the, what you see is the fee.
Okay.
Is the fee.
It's eleven fifty.
We would then add.
Add another dollar fifty to it, so it's really thirteen dollars.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now. Place of conference going on, let's talk about our own feesers. Planning Board, Mr. Patrillo?
All right, we want to keep all the fees the way they are, but there's a couple of things on it that, uh, a question, like the GIS for twenty dollars. Uh, we don't charge that anymore. Did they take that off? That was done when the planning was here. They were able to take the GIS and update the plan real, you know, quick, so they could see it.
I don't see a GIS.
I think they took it off, so it's gone. And one question I had brought up, and I don't know, it's not a fee that we charge, I mentioned it to Dave, that, uh, when we have these special town meetings and the meetings, we have these petitioned articles that come up. Well, it cost the planning board roughly a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty dollars to advertise that. Now, we don't budget for that. And I don't know if there's a way we can charge, uh, ten people put a petition together, they come into us. We have, if it's a public hearing with the planning board, we, it's going to cost us probably a hundred and forty dollars, two weeks advertisement. We have to take that out of our budget. Now, we don't plan for that, so I don't know if there's anything that we can.
I'm unaware of any mechanism by which we can, because a petition article is a petition article. The, having a public hearing on zoning changes is a requirement of the planning board. That's one of the functions.
Well, I don't know, zoning change, but there are some petitioned articles that come up that.
Yeah.
Come through the planning board that, I mean, it's like, last year, I think we had fourteen.
Yeah.
Now, you're talking, that's, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars that we have to pay out of our budget, that we have to transfer the funds.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any way to, um.
I don't know.
Can you sign an administrative fee?
I don't know how you can, because they're, they're required by the statute to hold public hearings on zoning changes.
That's like the town has to pay for any, you know, you put ten people together, you come in with petitions, so we have to pay that as taxpayers.
Yeah, I think so.
Just like if the citizens come up with two hundred for a special town meeting, we have to hold it and we can't charge them to hold it.
Uh, just something to look at, because, I mean, it's, you know.
I, I can see the cost. I mean, I can see where it, on your budget, it's going to have an effect, but that's how the Mercedes bends.
Figured I'd bring it up so you could look at it if there's any possibility of maybe getting a, a fee on that, but.
Now, you mentioned GIS. We, we're still paying for the GIS system, right? So you should have access to it.
Well, we have GIS here, but what, what used to happen is when a subdivision was recorded, we'd get a disk.
Okay.
That would go to the planner, and the planner could update quickly the GIS.
Okay.
And also, in simultaneous, it would get recorded to the, you know, registry.
Okay.
Now, what they do is, it just goes, gets recorded, and a year later comes back and it gets updated.
Now, is that because of the new system with the state or with the registry?
I think it's just because we don't have the person that actually.
That knows how to do it.
Puts this, you know.
We don't have anyone that knows how to do it.
Is it difficult?
I don't think, I think it's more than taking the, the disk and putting it, you know, updating it, but it's something we don't do. It's, we're done by the planner.
Yeah. Well, why don't we look into it and find out?
All right. I mean, and we just took that off. It was always.
We're paying, we're paying money for this GIS system. And there's a lot of it we're paying for that we're not utilizing.
Motion to recommend, is that the word I'm using? No, to concur with, um, these established by the planning board.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Finally, our fees. So there's a question mark next to entertainment license and handwritten note.
Yeah, what's that?
Is that a recommendation by someone?
It appears, um, this, this is what, this fee schedule that's before you for the Board of Selectmen has been the, um, fee schedule that's been utilized by this office the last couple of years since I've been here and prior to, um, me, they were using for our. But, um, in reviewing the record, it was, um, I don't have it off the top of my head. I want to say maybe about a good four years ago, there was a motion. And it was, um, approved by the selectmen to reduce the entertainment license fee to fifteen dollars. And I, I put that there because I wanted to bring it to your attention that it was adopted by the selectmen, but it had to be about four or five years ago. And actually, Peter, you made the motion. I'm not sure, I can't recall if he seconded it, um, to change that fee.
Is it two years ago, Peter, or was it last year?
The yearly licenses.
It was, we redid the licenses and we allowed for a one-time license and an annual license. Was it related to that? Because there was a difference. The annual license may have been twenty-five dollars and the one-time license was fifteen dollars.
I believe you did the annual for fifteen dollars and the one-time. And I think it came up with, um, OLB.
It did come, right, that, we did that in the last year, so.
Because, yeah. No, it was like, um.
No, because I was on the board and I've only been on three years.
So is that comparable to?
So I, but I, I do think for an entertainment license, for an annual fee, fifteen dollars is appropriate.
If I remember the law correctly, you need entertainment license if you charge admission for something. Or you sell alcohol and have, you need this, this, uh, license. In order to deny a license, the licensing authority would have to show that it's not possible to hold the entertainment, entertainment without danger to the public. And that's a very high bar to meet, so we just grant the license. All of these licenses, their, their annual, I think most of them by state law. And there's no, and we, we go to a lot of work just with the paperwork, and you know how much time we spend signing and voting on all these things. There is no reason why the licenses, like, you know, class one, two, and so forth, entertainment license and so forth, automatic amusement devices, that would go on from year to year, where they couldn't automatically renew, subject to revocation for cause. That saves you a lot of time and, and energy and paperwork, because a month of December is taking up a good part with, with these license renewals. And the businesses, they have to scurry around, go to a little convenience store and see how many licenses they have up on the wall. I mean, it's a lot of them, and it's a lot of money. And they all have time requirements and so forth. Just, again, it would take a change in the state law, but issue the license, it continues forever, subject to revocation for cause.
But that will never happen, Peter, because then when a business goes out, you have all these licenses out there and you don't know who, I mean, the intent is to annually re-inspect. There are reasons which, I don't think it's our place to get into right now, but there's reasons why.
We don't re-inspect entertainment licenses and so forth, and taxi permits and so forth.
But there's other agencies that rely on the legitimacy of a business based on its licenses.
You can have, you can still have a fee, annual fee. It doesn't mean you have to renew the license. It just can be, you know, an annual fee is due every, once a year or something, if that's what it is.
And they're always going to generate a piece of paperwork along with it, so might as well get a license.
Well, in regard to the entertainment license, do you feel it's appropriate to lower it to fifteen dollars for the annual fee?
I think that it would be important for us to know exactly the prior action of the board and when specifically it was, instead of just going off of a fifteen question mark to really understand.
Well, isn't the spirit of this exercise to figure out what does it actually cost to do?
That's exactly right.
Why is it fifteen for entertainment and a hundred for a machine?
What work do we do?
Yes, true.
And that nature, so why these, you know, what makes one take longer than the other?
A hundred dollar per machine for automatic, which is a pinball machine or, you know.
Some of those are, but they're also set, isn't some of them regulated by the state, though?
Some of them are, and we need to have a distinction.
I don't believe that that is. I'll, I'll, I'll check into that, but I, I do know that in many cases, these were raised because about twenty years ago, that video poker was very popular and it required a lot of police action. So the idea was to set the license high because it's costing us money to, to do enforcement on these things. I don't know if that's true anymore.
I think, though, that.
None of it's, you know, they don't do those things anymore.
Right, but the hundred dollars per machine, though, we may want to check. I think that is specifically set in MGL.
Let me just check. I'll check into that.
So are we going to concur with the?
Well, I don't know, we can, right? Here we are.
Well, we can, well, the fee schedule, with the exceptions of these two, are not. Do you feel?
Can I, can I also suggest a deletion? We don't have any seasonal licenses and the state is not issuing any new ones. A number of years ago, they gave cities and towns the option of converting all seasonal licenses into annual licenses and go over their limit, and, and then they weren't allowed to issue any new license till, till they caught up. In other words, they grew, grew into the number of licenses they have, but, well, short story is, we can't issue any seas, we don't have any, we can't issue any, so.
Take it off.
Take it off.
Jay, I'm sorry, what were you about to say?
I'm just kind of frustrated that we're going into a lot of detail here. We don't.
Have all of them.
We don't have the information. This is the third, fourth meeting that this has been kind of on the list.
So additional information you'd like to see is the Board of Selectmen.
Action.
Action.
Which ones can we, which ones can we actually influence and which ones are mandated by state law?
I'll cover the automatic amusement.
Can you check on all of them? Because I don't know if the others are.
Right, the classes may also be, um, MGL, and the liquor.
The liquor, I know, isn't.
Okay.
That's a state. That's not a state.
No, city and towns set their own liquor license.
Okay, so then we'll visit at a future meeting?
I, I would suggest, so that, that Peter has made the, the distinction that, you know, we, we need to recognize costs, but I think liquor licenses are unique in that the city or the, the town is limited in the number.
Yes.
We have, so setting too low.
You're also allowed to sell them, too.
Yes, they have a economic value. They are allowed to be sold. Um, setting the fee too low encourages people to hold on to them when they're not using them. People turn the licenses in when, when they're, there's a substantial fee on them, because, you know, there's a substantial fee on them. If they're not making any money on them, uh, it's not in their interest to hold them, but.
And we actually had a business, we've actually had two businesses, three, three businesses in the last two years turn the licenses back in because they didn't generate the revenue to. So it allows us the opportunity to have those licenses available.
It, it's in the interest of the town to, to put those licenses in, in a place where, where they get their highest and best economic use, because it generates jobs in the town.
Can, can we add to that, that you'd also look at, just get some, uh, neighboring town information on the ones that, like, of, of, that fit into that category and class?
We can do that.
MGL-based.
Yeah.
Okay, um, then for, let's move on to old business. Letter D, discuss action, endorse springing all town meeting warrant, vote inclusion of warrant articles. Looks like number one, we don't have to give any action at this point.
We have to, we have to vote to include them, though.
Right, but I think there, if there are any that, that, um, people have questions. Any of our selectmen have questions on?
Yes, some of them, I.
One.
We may not, I mean, I'd like to discuss.
All right, let's start, let's start with, uh, number one, reports.
Motion to include our, uh, reports in the annual town meeting warrant.
Do we actually? Are there any outstanding committees?
Yes. Yes.
What's the outstanding committee?
Okay, um, charter review committee.
Do we expect a report?
Yes.
Oh, really? They're working fast.
They are.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we, can we, it, would it make sense at this time to state that the numbering of the articles is provisional at this point?
Yeah, I did not include article one. I didn't say by article one, I just said by reports.
We'll just go in order, and when, once we start to change them, you'll just read the, um, the title, okay?
Okay.
Just stay in order, though.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
FY eleven, inter intra, uh, departmental transfers, inclusion in the warrant.
Shall we move?
Others in favor?
Aye.
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 You mean second.
Who was the second? CRPD?
I was the motion, he was the second. Um, motion to include prior year bills in the annual town meeting warrant.
Do we have any yet?
No.
Second.
Okay.
You think the way you may, so keep it as a placeholder?
I have, you know, I always.
Okay. I'm sorry, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to include town budget as an article in the annual town meeting.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Just checking to see if people are listening.
Motion to include revolving fund accounts in the annual town meeting warrant. This is a standard warrant article that we have each year.
Is this the only one?
These are the only three that are reauthorized.
Okay, so five, six, and seven are also revolving fund accounts?
Uh, no, just five.
Just five.
Oh, okay.
Have a bad year to Enterprise.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Oh, wait, we got a second from Bruce already.
Oh.
Thank you, though.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, motion to include the enterprise fund warrant articles, wastewater department budget, water department budget, and ambulance division budget in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye. Whip right through those pages. Um, let me see, the next two. Okay, motion to include community access television budget in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Others in favor?
I have a question.
Sure.
Since we already appropriated the annual operating monies, why is this article in the warrant?
Because this is perspective for next, so you have.
Oh, that's, I'm, sorry, I'm thinking, okay. All right. I'll, I'll second the motion to include it, but there's going to be a big fight for me about the amount of money.
Well, um, I already got a second from Bruce. Thank you, though.
Tell those in favor.
He's just warning.
Aye.
Surprised by that?
Yeah.
Thanks for the warning, Peter.
Aye. Aye.
Um, okay, the next one, um, do you want to do discussions? Well, okay. Um, okay, the next one, um, do you wanna do discussions, well, okay.
Are you, right, transfer from ambulance centric?
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, on Article ten, this was submitted by the Fire Chief on Friday. I, I guess, I guess my question for the board is, this could also be covered within the inter intra departmental transfer line, with the same amount of explanation and all the other detail. My, my question is, do we want this as a separate warrant article, or do we want to include it there?
I think it should be in the inter intra fund transfers, correct? Because we're moving it from one account to the other.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be the normal course.
At the Peter, or you haven't had a chance to?
Huh?
Have you talked to Peter about this, or you haven't had a chance?
I haven't had a chance, but it, I mean, the only difference is it's a warrant, it's, it's a standalone.
Yes.
All the rest of that would be in the inter intra.
Okay. All right.
Does this mean we have to go back, undo that?
No, 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 no.
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 It's just gonna be put in that.
Okay, because you're not doing these yet, that's not fun.
Right.
Right, so it'll be motion to-
Exclude.
Exclude, transfer from ambulance intra fund to the ambulance expense account as a separate warrant article.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, I, I have a question on the next one, actually the next two. Can you, um, outline just the, how this will affect our, um, bottom line finances for 2012?
Yes, you will have the first year of debt service if these are, are approved within the budget. So, you're actually going, when the budget is approved, there will actually be an amount for the first year debt service for these two items within the budget, but you're still, but you cannot spend that money unless these are approved.
Okay, so these will come out above the revenue sharing agreement?
That is correct.
And what's the anticipated dollar figure, do we have one on these?
Um, one was one hundred and fifty-five thousand, the other one was one fifty, but, um, that was a placeholder that's been on the capital plan for five years. Um, Ben is checking in, checking in to, uh, update the cost figure, so we, we left the cost out, we'll put it within the motion.
The loader I know is more than that now.
Huh?
I know the loader's more than that now.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
If you can get a dump truck for that, maybe.
Okay, so, okay, so it'll come out, so, if our ceiling next year is, I'm just gonna pull out a figure, twenty million dollars, this will be part of that twenty million dollars.
That's, that's within the, that's within the levy.
Right, so it's not gonna raise, it's within the levy, so it's not gonna-
Paid for through the revenue share.
Won't affect the taxes quote for the residents.
Yes. Comes off the top.
Anybody? Before I do the motion?
I'll entertain a motion to include borrowing authorization for the new front end loader, as well as borrowing authorization for the new combination dump truck.
Shall we move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is for, the next one?
Article thirteen is effectively transferring and repurposing surplus capital funds within the, within a water, um, a water town meeting warrant article that was gone out and borrowed a few years ago. The problem is, it was ver, a very specific purpose, um, I think it had to, I think that was the water tank article. This is leftover funds within that article, they've already been borrowed, they can only be spent on a similar capital project, something that you could borrow over a twenty-year period. The problem is, we need to do a town meeting warrant article to move it from that account to this account because of the specific language within the original, wi, within the original authorization of town meeting.
This is the surplus of one point five million that you were talking about earlier tonight?
Uh, no.
This is a separate account.
That's correct, and there's, I mean, there's-
That was established specifically for a purpose.
Right, and the pro, and the project came in under budget, but the money had already been borrowed. Uh, Ben already has capital, capital projects that he would otherwise be borrowing for if he didn't have this money available. But we have to repurpose it out of the original authorization, because that was very specific.
And it was paid for via a CIF?
Yes.
And what's his intent to use those funds for?
Um, he had a couple of things in mind, um, one of which, and, uh, um, I, I don't, I don't know if he discussed it with the town manager or not. There's, there's one area, he's got one area where he has to run a pipe underneath one, underneath one of the bridges, and he's got another area, do you, are you familiar with that one, Mike?
No, he didn't discuss that with me.
I think he ma, he mentioned that, and there's a nu, there's another, there's another, uh, area of piping that he needs to replace as well. He will have all that documentation when we vet this out.
Okay, um-
Is he the sponsor of the article, then?
No, I think he wants us to be the sponsor, correct?
Um, we, it's, however you wanna do it, really. If you want the, the board can do it, or, or he can do it, how, whatever your pleasure is.
We're wanting to see what commissioners as well as the Board of Selectmen, so we should do it.
Um, motion-
Water commissioners or Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, water commissioners.
Water commissioners.
Um, motion to-
Well, I don't know, did we post a meeting as water commissioners?
No, we did not.
We didn't.
Motion to include-
Would it be required?
I don't think so. I'll just make a Board of Selectmen.
I thought council weighed in on that and said it wasn't required, at this point.
I believe so, because we, we had a-
We used to do that all the time, and I believe-
We had a previous discussion, and we didn't have to adjourn and then start again, as what answer-
That, right.
No, well, we already were watering sewer tonight for the public hearing.
I mean, you don't, when you do a liquor license, you don't post as licensing, licensing commissioners.
Right. Right.
Yeah, the Board of, the Board of Selectmen, the licensing, so, actually, okay, the Board of Selectmen by state law are water sewer commissioners.
So we're gonna quit Board of Selectmen?
Motion, want me to put it in the motion?
When we, we act on this at town meeting-
Yeah.
Is Ben gonna have a spending, have what he wants to spend it on, or sit in an account?
Yes. No, 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 no.
So he will have it, okay.
He al, he already has, has intent of spending it.
Oh, all right, okay.
That's not an issue. He, he will have that, matter of fact, I've got, I've got the memo back at the office, and, but he's, he's got plans for it. We just can't use it out of the account as it is now.
Motion to include funding a new water enterprise capital account from surplus water enterprise capital funds in the annual town meeting warrants, um, including sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, explain the next one? Or do you want me to?
Uh, chime right in.
Well, the only, the only reason why I, I bring this up, because I, um, after our meeting the other, um, where this came from was, um, after we talked about the cable contract, um, we discussed that at the Springtown meeting last year, um, the Board of Selectmen had agreed on one of the questions regarding the cable, that we were gonna start fu, spending the cable money, that the Board of Selectmen was taking that responsibility on last year, I don't know if you all remember, but we had had that discussion, and that we had been working towards that through this year, that's why we had Barry come, come in back in December and give us his budget and everything. Well, if everything, um, were to the point where hopefully, um, we will have the cable contract signed, sealed, and delivered, uh, very soon, and so, um, that's where this is coming from, because then the next thing would be, is we know where we are with cable, now let's go ahead and start projecting out the monies. And so Barry provided a list outlining the expenses that he's gonna need over the next three years, and in going over that list, realized that some of the things that are needed for the new studio would have to be appropriated in this 2012 budget, because they would have to be included-
For the school opening in 2012.
For these, exactly, so, that's where, um, the dollar figure actually associated with this, I believe, is a hundred and eleven thousand, is my mo-
Hundred and eleven.
Hundred and eleven thousand is the amount that he would be looking to expend right now, and he would provide commentary on how it actually breaks out into which specific equipment.
Uh, we didn't include that, just in case there was any flex with the numbers. And, and I guess, once again, the same question, uh, to pose back to the Board of Selectmen, as to whether or not this would be a standalone, or whether that would- This one I feel a little bit differently on, just because it's a much, it's, it's a bigger capital expense. Now, you could, you could either put, you could either have it standalone, you could put it there, or theoretically, you could have it raised as part of his 2012 budget, it's really, it really depends on where, where you wanna go with it. I, I, I probably would not recommend inter intra, just because this is-
Much larger dollar figure.
This is a large dollar figure.
Five thousand dollar ambulance request.
I mean, my recommendation would be, is that we leave it as a separate appropriation of the equipment, because we are spending a portion from the savings, and I believe that's how we handled, um, in the past, that's how we've handled PEG access expenditures from that account.
And then who is the sponsor for this?
Uh, it would be the Board of Selectmen. Would be my recommendation. Motion to include, uh, funding appropriation for the purchase of cable PEG access equipment sponsored by the Board of Selectmen on the annual Springtown meeting warrant.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll wait on this.
Okay.
I'll wait on this, because I, I, I wanna see if the contract has been, is being negotiated to benefit the subscribers, and consistent with the expressed wishes of the subscribers.
So you want to abstain now?
Yeah, I'll just hold off on this.
Okay. You want to abstain or hold off?
That's what I was gonna ask about, though you are.
Abstain?
No, abstain.
Abstaining, got it, moving on.
Um, fifteen and sixteen are brand-new mass general laws. Um, um, fifteen has to do with, uh, par, partial abatements to National Guard and, uh, members of military reserve, reservists. Sixteen has to do with, uh, uh, tax breaks to seniors that are eligible for the state circuit breaker. I'd, I'd like to sen, to say, I spent a lot of time researching that, the law, I did not. It, these, Paula gave me, gave me these Thursday afternoon. I don't see where there's going to be a major effect on overlay in either case. Um, so I, you know, certainly, certainly affecting those, those two, those two constitu, constituencies, I would recommend that we put them on.
I would actually like to comment on these, I, I don't concur, um, especially with, um, the first one. Military personnel are already, they are compensated, when they are go active duty, they actually receive-
A lot of money.
They receive a specific location stipend, which pays for their housing while they are out of country, and they also get a locality pay that's associated with that, then while they're over there, all of their income is tax-free. While their family may still be back here, living in the location, still providing on the town services. So I, I don't see where, you know, I see both of these articles as a way of, you know, and I, and believe me, I, you know, especially on the first one, that, that directly still could impact me, you know, personally. You know, my husband could re-up at any time, but I, I don't see where that-
Carrie, is that a, a personal opinion on your vote on this, or do you think that that's enough cause not to let the town vote on it?
I think that that's enough, I see both of these as, how do I say this? I, I, I guess I wanna say is, you know, I understand the idea of hardships for others, but when, when we provide a, a less tax to one particular group, then it only puts a higher tax burden on another. We have a ceiling that we tax to, and if we are not gonna have individuals pay a portion of their tax, and that's gonna have to be consumed by others that are continuing to pay the tax. So, you know, to me, I see this as personally a form of socialism in taxing the middle class more and more to pick up the burden for others. And I, given our economy, I just, I think this is too great of a burden to put more additional tax on property tax holders.
So would you vote not to include them in the?
I would vote not to include both of them, yes.
Just, just as a point of clarification, um, Madam Chair, um, on, first of all, two, two points on these. These are, these are brand-new, they have a two-year sunset provision, which is unusual for the, for, for these type of things, but, um, you have two, the first two years, you can use them, if you want them after that, you have to re-up, and they have to be re-approved to town meeting. Um, secondly, just, just a, a comment on Carrie's point, is that, um, when, when you do this type of abatement, and we're prob, we're probably, we're probably, we're, we're probably splitting hairs a little bit, um, if any type of abatement that's given comes out of overlay surplus, or overlay, it doesn't spread to everybody else, is it a cost that, note that nobody else gets? Yes, but it's not, it doesn't directly impact any other bill. It, it affects whatever overlay surplus is turned in, turned in when that levy is closed.
However, but to the extent that we don't need that excess, that overlay-
Put that to-
That excess overlay can be appropriated to the general fund-
That's correct.
Which we have done on occasion to the town's benefit. So all these things do, in fact, cost money. And, you know, it's tough to stop this stuff, but the, the reality is, that what government does is take money from people who earn it, and they give that money to somebody else. And every dollar we take from a person is a dollar that that person loses the ability to decide for themselves how they wanna spend it.
So do we have a motion?
Well, I, there are two things.
Inclusion or exclusion?
One is, it's on the, you know, putting on a warrant, which I wouldn't be adverse to, and the other is recommending it.
Right.
Correct, I'm just looking, I'm just looking for inclusion or exclusion.
We'll just get it.
You know, I wanna make that distinction, you know?
Correct, yes.
I may vote to put it on the warrant, um, and it's tough, because once it's on the warrant, you're gonna have people say, you know, the hot, uh, you know, the, oh, we're seniors, we're, we're, we're- They'll forget that seniors pay taxes, too. Hot is hit by the taxes that we impose.
So I'll-
But this doesn't apply to all seniors, here's the key, it only applies to-
No, I know that.
Okay, so I'll undertake a motion for the acceptance of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause fifty-six, relative to National Guard members and military reservists deployed outside the United States.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor for inclusion?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Is Miami still part of the United States, I forgot?
Miami?
Yes.
As far as I know.
One would hardly know, if you go down there.
I will undertake a motion for the acceptance of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause fifty-seven, relative to seniors eligible for state circuit breaker tax credit for inclusion in Springtown town warrant.
Shall we move?
Town warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now, were these circuit, I, were these circuit breakers approved by the electrical inspector?
No comment.
What was the fee collected?
Are they arc, arc fault breakers, or just a normal, it's circuit interruption breaker?
I have to, Madam Chair.
Just gonna back up a minute here, um, I just wanna see if you have a sponsor.
Oh, you have to have sponsors on both those?
True, oh, um-
Well, where did the article come from, who gave it to us?
Is it from the assessor?
You gave it.
Or you?
Well, the assessor found it.
Oh. Okay, so we'll use the finance director, if that's, if you provided it.
Tell me, amend the motions? I'm, I'm withdrawing.
Floodplain Overlay District, the zoning bylaws. I amend the Floodplain Overlay District of the zoning bylaws, Article eight, Section four dash thirty-seven, to include in the annuals town meeting warrant.
We need to put someone on, on page seven, if you see there's a blank, uh-
I'm sorry, what?
We shouldn't be passing it that way, there's a blank space.
Oh, in a river-
Appropriate official.
River into appropriate official and community, so I'll notify it.
You know, the purpose of this is, when a water course is altered, when, uh, when there's a flood that actually redirects a river or something, that, uh, that person is responsible for notifying that list of, of people. I guess the candidates would be myself, the police chief, or the emergency management director.
Who's the emergency manager?
We try ever.
With that ever.
We probably would put it.
We're waiting back for some information when town pass.
Yeah, town council is going to look at that article, and, um, there, there will be an amendment to it, I do know that, but right now, we can just stick with the inclusion of it.
All right.
Okay.
Then we can wait for the additional information after the town's addition.
Yeah, so you can just vote to include it, and-
Second.
Once it's rejected, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna answer before we post them. We gotta answer before we post them up.
Peter, Jake?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll double check. I undertake a motion to include, amend the zoning bylaws in the spring annual town meeting warrant.
Don't think it can't be on this.
Of course.
Like, when these come up, these are very difficult for the people. I say people, me. Very difficult for me to exactly follow. Is there a better way to represent this?
The R, the A, the S, yeah.
In, like a tab, like to actually put the table in here so people can see this or?
The way the tables light out, yeah.
It's the cost of printing it too.
Yeah.
But as we get this document more finalized, um, there will be commentary, which will explain in detail what this, how this is talking about the residents.
I don't understand it.
Uh, don't be so sure about that one, that.
Let me just make a couple of, of points. I don't wanna go into in detail, but I, 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 this is for, you know, the Blanchard School reviews and so forth.
Correct, uh-huh, correct.
I, I noticed there are no standards by which the ZBA is to make its determination. In other words, the ZBA is given a free hand.
But wouldn't they use their, the, they have a, they have a stand, they have a checklist of questions that they?
It depends on what the underlying bylaw is, you know, and what, whether it's a special permit and so on and so forth. But you might wanna consider some objective standards that the ZBA should look to. Also, I just wanted to call to your attention, um, one of the areas, D, accessory uses in the use category entitled, quote, retail trade or sho-, uh, I'm sorry, C. Um, in the use category entitled retail stores and slash or services. Change it from no to ZBA. If you go to our wonderful bylaws and look under the definition of retail stores slash or services, this is the, the, how it's defined. A facility selling goods and not otherwise categorized. So if you're a service and do not sell goods, then you wouldn't be allowed here.
But would it be covered, so if you're an attorney, wouldn't that be covered under business or professional office?
Because attorneys are listed, yes.
Well, can you think of something that would be a retail store that wouldn't sell goods?
No, 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 I'm talking about a service that wouldn't sell goods.
Oh, so can you think of, can you think of an example of a service that wouldn't sell goods?
Um, well, you know, lots of professional services. Uh, I mean, there are hundreds of them.
But, but.
Our bylaws mention a few.
Mm-hmm.
But under the category of retail sales or service.
So you're saying we have to define, we have, the issue is not with this, it's with our definition.
That, that's correct.
Right, so.
That's correct.
At the fall town meeting, we would need a zoning bylaw to redefine the definition of retail stores slash and or services.
If you wanted to.
Um, no.
What?
But with, did she make a motion? No, she did not make a motion.
That's true, I'm particular.
But with regard to, um, any requirements from the ZBA, in addition to this article, you could always throw something in the, the motion.
Yeah, no, I know that. That should be in the motion if you wanna do that.
Yeah, I have a note to.
Yeah, okay.
One, one point on this article, and, and it has been observed when we've been talking about, uh, revamping the zoning bylaws. Uh, special permits have traditionally been issued by the ZBA, but would it be more appropriate for planning to do this?
No.
No.
It doesn't, it doesn't live to that standard, I would say, no. I mean, 'cause there's no, planning isn't gonna weigh, this is just a matter of, no. This is just a matter of use. It's not a matter of all the other things for planning.
But again, the, the ZBA is an appellate law. You appeal to the ZBA for a variance with something. And when you do, you normally have certain standards by which the ZBA should look to.
Right.
You know, we wanna see this, 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 and this.
Right, which is the case.
It'll be given latitude, but some general standard.
So I undertake a motion to include, amend the zoning bylaws article in the spring annual town meeting.
So move.
Which is Article eighteen.
But we're not giving numbers, but.
Uh, okay, yeah, but, but, yeah, okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Um, if we're not gonna put, um, we should identify it as more than just amending the zoning bylaws.
That's good.
I'll give, but I think that's the.
Okay.
I already have it here in the minutes with.
Okay.
So that's fine, yeah.
And that's the only one that has that general.
But in your minutes, because of the renumbering and so forth, and just to be safe, there, there is the, the article, and what we can just, just reduce the font size, so there's no question of.
Motion to include street acceptance for Glen Street and Lee Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Already did twenty and twenty-one. So a motion, I'll undertake a motion to include street acceptance of Anthony's Way and Jacomo Way.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Men, Section six, the budget of the X Bridge Home Rule Charter. Oh, oh, we need a discussion on this first.
This. A citizen's petition was brought in.
Yeah.
Before the warrant opened. And we told the individual, we took a copy of it, and we asked the individual to bring it back in, uh, when the, uh, when the warrant was open.
Right.
He did not do that, and apparently he's away. I don't know if the board wants to include it of their own, on their own motion. I asked, uh, the town clerk if she could certify the signatures from the photocopy, and she said no, she could not. She needed the live, uh, the live signatures to do it.
Do we know if the individual was away for the duration of the time that we were trying to reach?
Yes, I did. Uh, Tracy was asking me about it, and, but she kept talking about, you know, the, the petition of the citizen, citizen. It just didn't dawn on me. It's Howard Fortner.
Right.
And I know he's away because I went to the pancake breakfast with him, and he had ended up leaving the next day for. It just didn't connect one word.
To me, I see there's two different, and it's a procedural issue, I guess. I see two different, when I, when I read the charter, it doesn't specifically say that an article has to be only accepted during the time that the, that the warrant is open.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that. So it just says, at any time, we can accept s- um, citizens' petition. So as far as that, for him to hand it in when the warrant wasn't open, I don't see as the issue. The other issue that may be is that didn't have the clerk stamp it. May be a separate issue. But then, then the warrant doesn't, the, the charter didn't speak to it having to be stamped in by the town clerk.
I, I think this is certainly an issue that, because the, the town clerk checked with the AG's office, and he said, you really shouldn't accept petitions unless there's a warrant, unless the warrant is open, because it creates a problem. Especially with our, our charter that says you have to send it out. We can't certify the signatures until the cert, until the warrant's open, because, uh, the people who, the, the signatures on there may not be valid at a later point when the warrant is actually opened. You know, you could have a citizen die or move away, or for whatever reason be ineligible to, to.
So the charter sure needs to be amended in that regard, but.
But the real problem here is that the town clerk needs the original signatures to certify. This resident did not bring the original document or petition to the town clerk's office, so she's not in receipt of the original. We did provide her with a copy, but you cannot certify.
Signatures on the copy.
Exactly.
So the question then.
So we don't know who has the original.
That aside, if we can look at the warrant article and decide whether the board is going to sponsor this article themselves.
Correct.
I would be inclined to do so, because he made a good faith effort to get the signatures, which are the ten signatures that he's required to get. When I read the state law, you know, you get a petition for an annual town meeting. The annual town meeting is a known time. You know, it's set for the second Tuesday in May and so forth. And it's supposed to be included in the next available warrant, and it was done in timely fashion for that. I have questions about whether it, it's va, it, it, the thing will work.
Right.
As designed, but that's a separate issue.
Right.
You know.
Right.
People signed it in good faith, um, I, I would put it on, and assuming that, you know, if he, you know, we put it on, we can always pass over it at town meeting.
Sure.
But I wouldn't, on a technicality, say, well, he didn't do this, didn't do that, so we're not gonna put it on.
So is that a motion, Peter, in having, listing the?
Listing the board as a sponsor.
The board as a sponsor?
Yeah.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's gonna be an interesting point.
It'll be interesting. I'll undertake a motion to accept and include the, amend the general bylaws to reduce the council on aging board from eleven to seven members for inclusion on the spring annual town meeting warrant.
Um, can we talk about this for a second?
Hmm.
My, my concern is this. We're right, this is an issue that deals with the charter, and we are in a charter review right now. Why would this, why would we consider, there's no sponsor listed, so why is a board?
Sorry, there's a sponsor of the council on aging.
Oh, okay.
And they're the, they are a multiple member body.
Correct.
Did they vote on it?
Yes, they did.
Okay, it has to go on the, on, now, for this, because it's impacted by the charter.
Right.
There'll have to be an election. Two things. We'll have to vote on it at town meeting.
Yeah.
And then, then, a year later, it'll be on a ballot.
Right.
And they're pursuing that, and that has been, that was discussed with them, and they're well aware of it. And they will be gone before the charter.
Right, and the charter committee could then.
Yep.
Say no.
Say no.
Right.
Which.
There's multiple steps that have hurdles that have to jump, but.
Correct, yeah.
It's the way it is.
It's a process at least.
Does anyone know why?
Yeah, what's the purpose to this?
I think the difficulty is getting a quorum when there are eleven members. If you think they may have to get six people.
Yeah.
Or to attend a meeting.
Well, that's okay. The cable committee hasn't had a quorum in a year. Yeah, that has bothered us.
Okay, so I had a motion. Is anybody second it?
You walked right into that one, didn't you?
I had to give an explanation. I made the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can you explain the next one?
Yes, and I hope we can pass, pass over this, but it's in here just in case we, we do need it. Cause I couldn't, couldn't get ahold of Leslie today to ask her the question. I understood that on the opposite side of the road, you know, that there's a, an area that we need to slope for the entranceway to the, the, the new high school. Pat was concerned. We, we will be, and I've been in discussion with the, the owner. He's willing to give us a right of entry. The concern is the right of entry is, uh, a license, it's, it's, uh, revocable at will. And that's fine. I have no, no concerns about this gentleman, but if we're gonna permanently alter any portion of his land, town council, uh, strongly suggests doing taking.
And it may.
Because it, it otherwise would be revocable. If we just need his land, and I, I think this may be the case, but I wanted to verify it with Leslie, we just need to enter his land for access to do the work we need, and we're leaving it as it is now, then we probably don't need this.
What if, because if there's no la, language, or do we need language in here for a funding mechanism? Because if we end up having to take it by an easement and it becomes an unfriendly taking, how are we gonna pay for it?
Well, the gentleman was, is, he's a very, very nice man, and I, I.
Nice until you tell him he's taking his land and now he wants to be compensated for it. I think that that's an assumption on our part.
If we take any land, I think it would be very small, a very small amount. Most of the sloping is on town, currently town land, and I think possibly all of the sloping will be there.
I understand that, but if it becomes an unfriendly taking, there's still gonna be a cost associated. Do we need to put a funding mechanism in?
Well, Pat didn't think so, but I, I suppose we could add it if we, if, uh, if the board thinks it may be necessary.
Well, my only concern is that you agreed to the easement, and then the question is, is how is it gonna be funded? Is that something that we need to be concerned with? Who's gonna pay for it?
So we just change the?
Well, certainly the project contingency could be, we have funded, uh, costs for various costs of the po, project. It could come out.
And shouldn't we state that in here, that the funding would then be the school project, so that it's clear?
Um, okay. But they can, we're talking about the specifics of the article.
Right.
Well, no, but the only reason why I say that is because now is the time we can change the language, correct? No?
No, we can still change the language, right.
When you, when we do the recommendations, that's exactly, that's when you wanna do it. Something very similar to when we do the Farnham House, when you do your recommendation.
Okay, I thought we, this, okay, I'm sorry.
But I do have a note because you raised a very, very good point.
Just putting this on is sort of belt and suspenders, really covering our options.
Who's the sponsor?
Well, and that's why I raise the issue of the funding source. Okay, then if we, there's still time to do it before we have an amendment.
We've, we've done these before. We've done easements like this before about funding mechanisms. We just seek per, we just seek per, we just seek permission for the easement. There's not, uh, we've had, had many that haven't had any funding mechanisms. It's getting, it's getting the permission, but we put the language in just in case. But you don't need, you don't need to have a funding source within the article. We've passed many without them.
David, we have a funding source.
Right, but you don't need to specify, I mean, you're, you're making, you're making an assumption that in the end, we're gonna be purchasing it, or we're putting a funding source in there.
No, I'm trying not to make any assumptions. I'm just trying to cover all of our bases.
Right, but as long as.
Don't do something that then we find out after the fact we forgot something.
Right, but the language you have in here would, would certainly suffice for it.
I know that the area we need to access is only twelve hundred square feet. Anything we needed to take would be, I think substantially smaller than that. And I think it's gonna be zero.
Uh, motion to include high school entry slope grade construction easement in the annual town meeting warrant.
With the board of selectmen sponsor?
Yes, thank you. E O S sponsor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Amend the X Bridge zoning bylaws, Chapter four hundred, Articles six, Section four hundred dash twenty dot B. Actually, twenty B five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, the wording doesn't make sense, but it's a citizen's petition.
Yeah, what are they changing in this? I couldn't figure out what that.
Well, they're adding solar.
Solar.
Oh, is that what they're doing? Okay.
Solar is already something.
It's already covered somewhere else.
By a matter of right, by state law.
Right. Yeah.
But the wording just doesn't make sense. I mean, in this way, the area just doesn't make sense. Do you know who the petition arraigned?
Who?
Marjorie Anderson.
Yes.
That's a petition.
Why would they need to when it's a matter of right?
They're out of Connecticut, aren't they? They're out of Connecticut, aren't they? Maybe they don't know.
Maybe they don't know it's a matter of right, yeah.
Okay. Well, let's go back to our chair, we have meeting minutes to approve. Jay, sorry.
I'm looking at you, Jay.
Meeting minutes, sorry. Are there meeting minutes within the, for all of us to approve as well? Everyone provided feedback to Tracy. On February fourteen, eleven, meeting minutes, which I believe they're separate, yeah.
What are you doing for a fourteenth?
Yes, February fourteen.
Okay. You wanna go first?
Well, we're just gonna tell Jay in.
C.
New business C thing. She's already, she knows she's gotta look up that motion, so it's just gonna be as amendment. We're just making a note. And under new business C, it's changing, um, because there's a motion, but there's no second or the vote listed.
Yeah, I'm gonna burst that.
Under old business, first page, three, old business A, new high school project meeting update, Mr. Under old business, first page, three, old business A, new high school project meeting update, Mr. Desilts, blah, blah, blah. And then go down to four, new business A, new high school project, SBC meeting update, Mr. Desilts, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, it's a repeat.
Same thing.
It would have to-
Oh, no, actually, um, this was-
It was on there, it was on there twice.
It was on there twice, but the, the second piece, the new business, was, um, giving me the authorization to sign that letter for the MSBA.
And actually, it's not correctly, wasn't that a re-vote, wasn't that a re-
We didn't take an official vote because it wasn't on our agenda when we had the joint meeting with the SBC previously. So it was on this agenda for us in order to be able to take an official vote.
But I think that the, Peter's correct, in the section that says between new high school project and two sixteen eleven, that should be deleted from the second line.
Correct.
And that should be bumped up.
I thought we had had a different-
The, the new business-
Yep.
The first two lines should be deleted.
Except for this is for new business A four.
New business A.
Yep.
The first two lines, starting with new high school project.
Yep.
And ending with two sixteen eleven. Should be deleted. And then that other section just bumps right up. Um, also, recommendation under B, senior center update. Since we have, Mr. Cahill will draft a letter for the chair to sign. Um, we should put that as an action item.
Where, where are you new?
New business B.
Business.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the-
I don't see a B, oh, oh, B.
B.
Okay.
On new business B, you said, Karen?
Uh-huh, it has, Mr. Cahill suggested the board send a thank you letter, Mr. Cahill will draft a letter for the chair to sign.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that should be an action item. So that if it doesn't get lost and forgotten.
It was already done.
Done and done, but, yeah. Um, just if we, sorry, revisit, I just pulled up the agenda we had for the, um, February fourteenth, and the actual new business A should read high school project. So where, that what's been made into a bullet is the actual item, the agenda item.
So you get rid of that?
Get rid of, um, new high school project, right, get rid of the first two lines.
Revue them top. Okay.
And just pull the bullet up.
All right, that makes sense.
Pull the bullet up.
Um, just, I mean, I appreciate the fact that that was already done, but that if it was a letter from the board, it should come back to the board for review, and then authorize the chair to sign, because we never took a vote on that, because it went out. You understand?
We didn't take a, um, yes, we also didn't take action that it should be reviewed by the board.
But we also didn't take, we didn't authorize the chair to sign it either, there was no motion.
True.
So just for future-
We certainly revised that.
Mm.
Will we have a copy of it, correct, Jay?
What's that?
Tracy has a copy of it, she can circulate it.
I have a copies and, and-
Yeah.
I think, just put it in the refile, but just for future.
Yep, that's a good point.
Under C, um-
New world here.
Huh?
New world.
Okay, um. Noon. This motion by Mrs., um, I don't know, motion by Mrs. Pittman, that the board authorized the chair of the board of selectmen to be a voting member of the cable advisory committee, seconded by Desilts, motion carried, three to two. But we didn't actually make her a member of the committee.
She was already.
Because you do that by saying, you know, we appoint so-and-so to be a member of the committee.
Voting member, all right, so should've said have voting rights?
Well, I don't know, but anyway, you, you haven't been sworn in, so-
I have to go do that?
Yeah, it's moot, anyway.
Is there a change to the, to the note, or is this more of a commentary procedurally on the future?
I don't know, it's-
Let's just be smarter about what we recommend.
It's hard making motions on the fly.
Correct.
I don't care who does it, it's, it's hard to do. And it's very hard getting minutes a week after the meeting and trying to remember what the heck we did.
Any other changes to February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven?
We have, just under discussion, action, manager, go vote. Um, says there was a motion, uh, seconded by Miss Robertson, the motion carried two to three.
So the motion failed.
Yeah.
It says motion failed.
Now, I've had a discussion with Tracy about this, in her view, the word carried doesn't mean it secured enough votes.
Oh, I see.
It just means it received two votes, but everything I see in, in minutes means it carried means it received enough votes.
Yes.
It means approved.
It's approved.
So it should say the motion-
So that's where the confusion.
The motion received two, three, motion failed?
Well, it should say the motion failed.
Motion failed, two, three, motion failed, twice.
But again- Keep in mind that the charter says we need a call by the roll of yeas and nays.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't have to, you know, you have to say who voted yes and who voted no, we didn't have to call their names, um, unless it's unanimous. So here we have Mrs. Pittman, Desilts, and Cahill, we know they opposed, and we made the assumption that, um, two voted in favor. You, you understand?
Are you missed?
So you're, so we should-
No, you're missed, although-
But the charter requires-
So we should put two-
Unless it's unanimous.
Missed is only three.
Who, how many yeses, who voted yes, who voted no, and then anybody abstain or whatever.
It's ridiculous.
You know, we've been doing that for, that many, right, it's four, one, Cahill opposes, or three, two.
No, usually we have the votes, but, um, sometimes we forget.
The line over here, is something else?
Oh, yeah, ju- just, uh, town manager, town manager, blah, 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 he also attended a meeting for joint dispatch, and is moving forward with a feasibility study. Are you doing some feasibility study? Okay.
Colonel Douglas.
Douglas is moving forward with the feasibility study.
Okay, it should say that, 'cause otherwise, um, I'd say, what are you doing?
Motion to accept the men minutes.
Oh, just before you do, up there, this is the general commentary, member issues, the board had general discussions. Now, I know we talked about a lot of stuff, but there's four words, we have no, I, I have no memory of what the heck we discussed, not that it makes any difference, but then we have town manager, we have one, two, three, four, five, six.
We should at least have bullets for what they are.
And know what we did.
Yes.
We should at least have bullets for what the member-
Well, you know, I don't-
Issues were.
They were required to carry notes, right?
If I, if it were me, I wouldn't do like things, I would just have-
Correct.
Refer, and refer people to the DVD, which is stapled.
That's right, it's so much easier.
I agree.
And we'd only have two pages of minutes.
But if we did bullet those, then we would know at least what were our hot topics were. You know, like, oh, that's right, we forgot we were supposed to, I mean, that's the only point, instead of going back and watching the DVD.
I, well, yeah, I take the notes from memory.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes for February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter?
Peter?
Aye, yeah, sorry.
Meeting minutes from the twenty-eighth.
Motion to approve February twenty eighth, two thousand and eleven, executive session meeting minutes. As written.
You're doing the executive, what about the regular meeting?
Oh, they were the next one in order, so I just-
Regulars first.
Oh, you want me to do regular first?
Yeah, February twenty eighth, regular, call for water, public hearing, meeting minutes, all of it.
Yeah. He's got some notes.
Okay.
I'm ready.
So you're ready for-
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Comments, okay. This is under old business C, the budget, in David's explanation. Now, remember, um, we were supposed to meet, you know, talk about the budget, and I kept saying for six months, we gotta get going, gotta get going, no, 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 we're gonna do it, but there's plenty of time, plenty of time, plenty of time. Then we have on the, on the agenda, preliminary budget review, and I said, you know, it's really too late to do that, we don't have enough time. Yes, we do, we have enough time, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. So the next meeting, David says, hey, by the way, fellas, you really don't have time, you're right. We're gonna accept whatever you wanna do. That's all.
Okay, so no change left.
Any other comments? Any other changes?
No, I'm leaving the change.
Motion to approve the February twenty eighth regular meeting minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Original motion stands on February twenty eighth.
Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry, I, I abstained, I wasn't-
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
And do we have a second for the, um, motion for the executive session minutes? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, who first did it?
I did.
Carrie did. Carrie first did it, and we don't have the three fourteen from our seven o'clock meeting. We know.
Here, take the regular, I'm on the way.
Okay.
What's the three fourteen?
Um, tonight's seven o'clock Farnham House meeting, we don't have those minutes, correct? Tracy didn't print them.
We don't need to.
No. Good, done. All right, Bruce. Old business, new high school project, SBC meeting update.
Okay, just a little update for fo- folks at home, if you haven't been down one forty-six A, of Quaker Highway, the construction has started, the entrance and exit have, have begun to be, uh, pa- not paved, but they've been broken into, and, uh, it should be completed very soon, they're, they're, they're going right along.
They really are, way quickly.
They're going right along.
Mm-hmm.
And a couple other things that have changed, on three seventeen, the trade bids, uh, due for the main package will be opened at Lower Town Hall at two P M. That was supposed to be three ten, but now it's three seventeen, of course, it's not three ten.
That makes sense.
Trade bids in there opened at, what time are they opening them at, ten?
Two, two o'clock.
Oh, two o'clock, thank you.
Uh, three thirty at six P M, there's a joint SBC, BOS meeting to approve the final G, GMP at the high school library.
At what time, again?
Six P M.
Six P M.
High school library, joint.
School building committee, BOS meeting to approve final GMP.
Okay.
And that's about it for the update. Mike, do you have anything?
Uh, as part of that, yes, I, I was out at the, uh, uh, school site today to look at the, the firewood, and, uh, they are really clearing, they, they are almost done. Uh, they would like to get that firewood out, and they're not willing to deliver it anywhere but a town facility, so I spoke to Ben, we're gonna put it, uh, for now at the transfer station. Uh, I, I drafted a notice for an auction, uh, the date, the date is open, but, uh, I wanted to discuss with the board whether we want to allow people to break the wood down on site.
No.
The, those things are huge.
I, I see there's a huge liability for the town, frankly.
Well, uh, there's a liability issue, which we could solve with waivers, but it's also gonna create a mess.
That too.
Selectmen Bagzarian tells me there are people in town that have appropriate vehicles to, to remove the wood in, in the sections that I described. They are pretty big logs, they're twelve to sixteen feet long.
Yeah.
Uh, full size, uh, some, you know, a couple of feet in diameter. They have been removing logs already from there, they have a, also a large pile of their stuff. It's good quality stuff, it's, it's pretty straight, it's almost a shame to burn it, I think it would mill up into beautiful wood, but-
Yeah, you know, yeah, I encourage you to bid on it, and then you can look at it to your heart's-
Camped it on.
Yeah, I can't answer, but it has to be from Oxbridge.
It has to be from Oxbridge, yeah.
That's what we had stated.
Yeah, that was what we-
Money's not green.
No, because the issue-
Peter, talk about the forest, right?
What?
The town forest, you had stated before it was for the benefit of residents for-
The town forest, but this is not town forest.
True.
That's nothing.
Still, um-
I don't see any reason to have it restricted to town residents, whoever pays the most money. I'm only unhappy that whoever bids on it is gonna bid about a hundred and fifty dollars less than he would otherwise, because now they have to pay a truck to go and bring it to their house. Whereas, you know, there's no reason why they can't, they couldn't deliver it to the successful bidder within a certain distance range.
Right.
But that's how it is.
Well, and that-
We believe Mercedes Benz.
Huh?
I mean, that raises a-
Mercedes Benz.
That raises a good point.
That's our Mercedes Benz.
Okay, so originally, though, original, uh, the reason why we limited it only to Oxbridge is because we, of the transportation. We figured they would only be able to transport it within Oxbridge, but now, if they're gonna have to pay transportation costs, why would we not open it outside of Oxbridge?
I thought that, um, that-
We had some bad phone calls.
I'm sorry.
We had some bad phone calls.
That's a good point.
We need some bad phone calls.
We already said it's for Oxbridge people.
Okay, but here's my thought process, a, a cord, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a cord of wood-
Correct, whatever, it's going on the town website, on the town-
Yeah.
Cut is what, two fifty?
K V T V, so they won't, no one else will know about it.
Okay. So if someone has to pay to now have this delivered to their house in sections-
People who do cordwood are professionals.
Well, we'll see, they might find it.
I use the method.
I understand that, but if, if they only can sell a cord for two fifty, right, then what are they gonna pay us for a cord? Maybe a hundred?
They're not gonna buy a cord, they're buying the truck, whoever gets the-
A whole load.
Gets the whole load.
I understand this, but it contains ten cords of wood.
Be ten, maybe twelve.
So what we're talking about, basically, the most the town's gonna make is a thousand dollars, maybe, if we're lucky.
Yeah, that's about right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Probably less than that, now that they have to hire a truck to go get it.
Yeah.
There may be more than ten, but, uh, that's why I allowed a, uh, inspection, so people can actually look at it, and if someone says, you know, there's more than ten cords in here, I'm gonna bid a little bit more.
Yeah, but they'll wanna look at it.
Or someone wants to mill, and they say, hey, this is great milling wood.
And so we need to give them enough time to look at it. Yeah.
Right, I'd bid more for it. But as Mike just pointed out, that this is only gonna be on our website and on public access, so by opening it up to anyone outside of Oxbridge, how would they learn about it unless they-
Unless they stumble on our relatives or-
I would be amazed how you're a spread sponsor.
Oh, yeah.
But for myself, I know people who buy, you know, tree length logs, and I've, you know, contacted them, and I said, we're gonna have this come up, and I'll let you know when the auction is gonna go, and you can look at it, and when the auction is gonna be. So all we need to do is set the date and where they can go and look at it.
Um, the only other thing that this does not, are we requesting that they take the wood in one?
Ship one delivery.
In one delivery. You say they can't cut, split, or other, well, okay, then put a timeframe, how long, I mean, can they take a log, a month for the next?
No, no.
But it doesn't say that they can't.
That needs to be included.
We should include the timeframe.
You under- you know, or else you could have it sitting there.
It must be agreed to remove it at their expense within a reasonable time period, and, and it's time to get the sewer plant, right?
Yep.
So they can have a week to do it, you know.
So remove it within a week.
If you have someone, they can only do it on weekends.
Within seven days of paying for the wood?
No, the bid being, mm...
No, you can't say bid being...
I'll just put a date cert.
Okay.
Alex, it goes to the second one, Mr. B.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Do you have enough information on that?
How soon will we have the date of the auction?
Uh, very soon, as soon as I, I need to find out when they can deliver the wood, but I think it can be...
Will it be auction or sealed bids?
Sealed bids.
Sealed bids.
Okay.
Said bids will be, uh, accepted here, uh, we'll set a date.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll have a, a bidding form and, uh, I've said you can pick the bidding form up to an hour before the close.
Up to an hour before the close, or before then?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So you don't have to, you can come in that day and pick up a form and, and bid right then.
That's fine.
Okay.
And you expect to have that planned? Couple of days?
Yeah.
End of the week?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just need a date. And I need to know that the stuff is gonna be there.
Okay. It's all cut already, right, they just...
Yeah, it's in a big pile, it's, uh, I, I'd say the pile's about fifteen, eighteen feet tall and it sort of tapers down and it's maybe twenty-five feet wide.
Now, you sure there's not too much ground pressure, that square, the, uh, turtles might be upset, uh, they might be compressed?
Moving on, new business.
I think they're gonna bid.
Letter B, Appointment School Building Commiss- Committee, Dennis Ryan. Dennis Ryan has stepped forward, he's a resident of West Street, um...
Now, is this an additional member?
Yes, this is an additional member who is volunteering his services as a construction supervisor, feeling that he can, um, his background will help him, uh, and help the town with any necessary review of the school building committee process with documents and working with Shamet going forward.
What, how many people are we gonna put on this committee?
How many do we have now?
What's it up to, eleven?
But I feel that there are times where, um, the, someone with this expertise, it would be, in my opinion, I, I don't think it would be wise of us to not elect him to this committee. Where I think other people have served, you know, have used their skills in a different way. We're at the point now where we are going to be in construction phase, we are in construction phase now.
Yeah.
Or, well, clearing phase now, groundbreaking, um, that this...
And this construction supervisor, what kinds of construction has he supervised?
Right, I mean, he could be residential.
Um, I do know that he has had experience working with Shamet previously, so I don't believe that...
Where he was?
He has worked with Shamet in the past.
Could there be a conflict of interest?
No, not to that point, no.
But what did he do with Shamet?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
What did he do with Shamet?
No, he worked on projects that they were a part of as well.
I know that, but what he did, when he worked on the project?
That I don't know, the specifics of it.
All right.
Um, with something to consider, that the idea with having individuals voting members and it was always the idea to keep an uneven number on that board. So if we go to twelve, that's an uneven number back on the board, and that was one of the considerations prior, that there was supposed to be an odd number on that board.
So what number are we at now?
I believe we're at eleven.
I'll have to check on that, but...
Okay.
I don't know if it's eleven.
We're on an odd number, I believe it's eleven.
But as a practical matter, it's, we never get, with a board that size, you never get everybody all there at the same time.
Right.
Well, and the larger the board, the more you need there to have a quorum.
Their board hasn't been an issue, their board hasn't been an issue, that mean forum. I understand your point, no, 'cause I brought it up previously too, with the council of aging, but this, there's never been an issue with that that I've seen with the SBC. So, I'll accept, um, the motion to accept Dennis Ryan as a school building committee member.
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Okay. And we're back to Old Business, Discuss Action, Town Manager Goals, Contract, Close Con, Reviews. Recommendations, Next Steps.
Second, I'm sorry.
You seconded? Bruce seconded.
Yep.
Carrie abstained. Got a J?
Hope so.
Hmm?
Hope so.
Well, that's what we have the tape for. Great.
We're on what, Old Business?
Uh, the Town Manager Goals, Search Contract.
Oh, yeah, C, sorry.
C.
So I have a couple of comments here. As I, I had mentioned to, I think to everyone at this point, uh, I'm not sure where we are, 'cause I missed the last meeting and I hadn't seen the video. But, um, my hope was that tonight when I'm voting on the contract extension, personally where I've been in this process is I spent, as I was away, I spent a lot of time last week kind of talking to a bunch of individuals, some that reached out to me, others that I've reached out to within the town, both civilians or citizens of the...
Residents.
Citizens and, uh, residents and, um, and employees of the town as well. And what I am committing to you, Mike, to do is kind of enter the board, is I'm in the process of putting all that feedback that I've got into a report, just a two-page here, three-page here, with some comments on, you know, um, kind of with the aggregate sense of, uh, of the folks' work, so that Mike can have it as, uh, as part of a review process from me. And I'm gonna sit down with Mike and, and we'll just go through it and I'll C C everyone on the board on that. Unfortunately, I, I just don't have it ready tonight, I was hoping that I would have it here tonight, but I, I couldn't get it done quick enough. So that was, that's kind of how I, I would like to address the, the, um, the review process of this. And as I, we've talked, um, in the past, given the, the state of the contract, I think what we have to do as a board is figure out how, how can we use this contract? Is it usable based on the milestones we've missed so far? And if not, what do we do to kind of correct that? And my, my concern is that, you know, we were s- we kind of laid out in, in Mike's contract, they could get a review in November, and that never came. So what's the recourse to that? And I do have some concerns, and again, this is independent of who the town manager is, but more, I have some concerns about the way the contract itself is written. I think there's some language in there that makes it very confusing to determine, um, whether or not the success criteria is achievable, and what exactly is the success criteria? So as a point of kind of action force as a board, I think we need to, the, I feel at least this contract in its current state is not reusable. Because of that, and I think we need to look at how we fix the contract, uh, as a matter of business. And then, uh, I guess what I'm asking the board is for, if the intention is to vote on Mike's contract extension, should not do that tonight. I, I don't think it's fair for Mike to be able to incorporate the feedback that I'm, I'm trying to gather and give back and, um, you know, both positive and, and negative, and not have a chance to kind of react to it. So I'm not ready personally to kind of have that contract extension. So I'm asking the board, I guess, to, uh, to consider, given the fact that we have time, we have to fix the contract, that we, we wait on a vote until further down the road.
How far down the, how far does this road go?
Well, we know we have to minimally, if we want to try to abide by this contract, which we already broke, we have to do it at least, uh, no later than May.
Thirty days?
Because the contract itself says it's gotta be done before, I don't know, what the language, but before, I think it's thirty days before the expiration of it. He has to be informed whether or not it's be, gonna be renewed. Now, my issue with the contract is, the contract also says in order for his contract to be renewed, he has to be notified in the month of June how he did on his performance review. So by definition, he could never be renewed because you can't notify him until after you've had it. So that, that's the issue I have with the contract, but I think we need to kind of figure out what's right and fair for Mike, given the fact that, one, I think the language is a little messy in there, and two, you know, we didn't do our part to give him a review in a, in a fair amount of time. So that's, that's my, uh, two cents on this matter. And I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I'd like to know, how, how, how do you feel about this motion, Mike?
Well, I'd like to know, I'd like to have some clarity before, a month before the termination of the contract. I, I, in this economy, if, if I'm not gonna be, if I'm not gonna be renewed, I'd like to know as soon as possible.
You know, I, you know, I... I understand the point that you're making, but, uh, Jay, um, but I'm... What keeps resonating in my head is that we all agree, uh, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we all agree that we, we did not follow the contract ourselves. And now, um, I mean, we, we've breached the contract. You know, we've opened ourselves up to liability potentially.
Sure.
And for us not to take steps at this point to try to rectify that, separate from the performance, I think is, um, an error on our part. I think that we, you know, in our intent with our discussion at our last meeting was that we were going to address the issue of the contract, that, you know, given the fact that we have not followed it. And, you know, we had the discussion that it would be at this point, trying to put ourselves back into line with this contract, it just wasn't feasible. I think your words were, in a prior meeting was, um, that would just be a sumer, um, a sumary date, uh, some, some layer...
Arbitrary date.
Yes, thank you, an arbitrary date to depict some other date in order to do what we should have done months ago. And so for that, I had made the recommendation, um, that we consider, um, entering contact negotiations and, and draft a new contract to become effective in April. And to move forward, and with that process, we would then look at how we were going to evaluate Mike's performance in the last year as part of a new contract. And I think that it's important for this board to have, you know, to decide.
I like...
Are we gonna do that?
Sorry.
You know, I mean...
Well, I, I, you're right.
Before, can I just, I'd like to point something out, um, for section six, Town Manager Evaluation, uh, letter B, semi-annually, at the end of the month of November, the board and the town manager shall define the goals and objectives, which they have determined is, yah, 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 yah. On Monday, October fourth, two thousand and ten, at our meeting, under Old Business, we had the manager's goals. And it was a motion by Mr. Cahill to approve the town manager goals for fiscal year two thousand and eleven as amended. So we had previously talked about it and we, in essence, did meet the deadline that was in year.
We met the deadline, but we didn't set up the goals.
We didn't get a review, I don't think so.
But I'm saying, it, it's, it, it's not that the entire contract hasn't been met, like, 'cause it, 'cause sort of, I guess, I get the feeling, by saying that the, you know, it needs to be discussed separately. Yes, you know, the goals were met, the evaluation, um...
But the goals were not met, you skipped over an important part of that section. Said goals, objectives, and priorities shall generally be attainable within the time limits specified and within the annual operating and capital budgets and appropriations provided by the town and by the events that have occurred during the year. We admitted when we were doing the goals, that some of those were not attainable, we knew they were outside of our budgetary restraints.
But then that's, then why shouldn't that have been commented on the goals when we adopted them on the fourth of October? That's my concern, I guess.
It was.
It was.
I told you the goal, the goal didn't make any sense.
Our nose, well, Peter, well, Peter, I mean, you opposed anyway.
Well, not, I didn't oppose just to be obstructive, I said, they don't make sense.
I agree, I'm just reading from our minutes that you, that you opposed the motion.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
And then when we, when he provided us, uh, um, the feedback on where he was with the goals at the end of December, versus the November date, um, you know, at that time, we even raised that some of those goals, you know, we, we had differing opinions on the goals, that, you know, we didn't... So I think that...
Which is always gonna be the case, contraction, right, this is why the, the language in the contract's kind of...
Well, right, I mean, uh, that's the part I'm looking at, we agree that there's a problem with this contract, okay? And so, you know, I think that at this point, we have to decide as a board, I mean... It comes back to outside of his performance, and I agree with you. It, it, it's irrelevant what his performance is, because we cannot fulfill this contract as written.
Correct.
So therefore, we have two choices, we either take a vote to, um, nullify this contract, or we take a vote to amend the contract or some action thereof, but to continue...
You can't, you can't unilaterally nullify a contract.
Well, he...
Unilaterally, uh, amend the contract, you know, the contract can be modified at any time by agreement of the parties.
Correct, but we...
But we're putting, what we're doing here is form over substance. You know, forget about the form for a moment. The basic decision for us to make is...
Do you want Mike?
Yes.
Correct.
Absolutely, that's the decision, the rest is immaterial. And as to the substance of it, and I haven't changed this in ten years, you cannot have a successful manager if you don't have a successful board. It can't be done, because the two have to work hand in hand. And the board is not functioning. And if any of you have any question about that, then we need to spend our time on that issue, because that's gonna be the same unless we make some change. And a new manager coming in is gonna be faced with the same, same issues. I think Mike has done remarkably well, given the fact that the board does not have an understanding of what it's supposed to do, doesn't do what it's supposed to do, doesn't follow through on things it's supposed to do, and is operating with Mike more generally as an administrative assistant to the board, rather than a manager. End of story.
I agree with, um, Jay's assessment that I don't feel at this point, you know, because I, I had promised to you, and I mentioned this to you maybe a month ago at this point, you know, that I want to sit down and talk to you specifically about positive and negatives. Haven't forgotten about it.
Mm-hmm.
Haven't delayed it purposefully, just haven't gotten to it. Um, and I don't feel that I would be doing yourself a service, or myself, without doing that first. Um, you know, whether it's based upon the goals or whether it's just based upon your, your productivity, for, you know? To me, it's six of one, half dozen another. You know, but I personally would like to be able to do that and sit down with you before our next meeting and share my input and my fe- my feedback to you with the rest of the board, as long as, you know, you agree to that as well.
Jay, could you do yours any sooner than May?
So, do what?
What you have to do.
This board calls for a vote, I, I will cast a vote any night of the week, I'm asking the board that...
No, I'm just saying, to, to be fair, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want it not be fair to you too.
Yeah, but, oh, hold on, let's back up for a second though, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, guys, this is either a priority or it's not a priority, and within the sense of, I mean, Beth, it was back in October that you had specific concerns with Mike. And here we are now in the middle of March, and you're telling him that in the last month, you haven't had time to do this, when a month ago, this was a critical thing. That, you know, how much more... To me, I agree with Peter, you, you either are overall, want to continue to work on a relationship, which is always an evolving relationship between individuals. Either you want to continue to work with this guy, or you don't, bottom line. To sit down and have this discussion with him, I think, I think you know in your mind whether or not you want to continue to work with him or you don't. And we're using, you know, all these others as excuses, maybe you're right, I mean, we either are gonna do it or we're not gonna do it, because in all fairness, if you don't want to work with him, and if you haven't taken the time to do it, or whatever the situation is, um, then with all due respect, let him know so he can go find another job.
I have taken the time to do it with him, I haven't sat down...
You just said you haven't in the last month to sit down with him.
I ha- I haven't, what I haven't done since our conversation after the meeting on February fourteenth is I came in and I just didn't, I don't remember if it was the next day or one day that week, when I spoke to Mike about it and, um, I said that I would sit down and, and go through, based upon his goals, a review of the year. I have spoken to him throughout the year. I think you're misconstruing it, Carrie. I'm saying that what I am owing of him is sort of, is a compilation of what the conversations have been.
Well, if, if you have gone over these things with Mike, then, and you, this is history you're talking about, you've already done that. Why don't you share with us the results of that? You know, tell us specifically what you're unhappy with, what you're happy with, and so forth.
I don't feel I'm prepared to do that one hundred percent, because I'd like to have everything ready.
But you've just told us that you've been discussing those things with Mike off and on over the last period of time. So he already knows what your... So he already knows what your concerns are or issues are, but, and you must know because you've discussed it with him, but we don't know. So why are we the odd man out?
Because, as I said, I don't feel comfortable doing it right now, not being one hundred percent prepared. Period. You can ask me, Peter, you can ask me the question five ways to the sun. It, I'm not going to change my answer.
You see, here's the thing. We talk about a lot, the, the open meeting law. And the open meeting law says you have to post your agenda and so forth and take votes in public and whatnot. But it's beyond that. If you read the open law, it tells, says, the purpose is not just that we see the vote in public. The purpose is that people get to see by what method members arrive at their vote. So when we're discussing something and someone says yes or no, and somebody says, well, give us a reason, and the person says, well, I'm not gonna give you a reason, I'm not prepared. What does that tell people? Tells people either really there isn't a reason or you don't wanna say what the reason is.
I have that-
But that's, the whole idea of the open meeting law is we discuss things and say, hey, why do I think this? I'll tell you why. Not that I'm not gonna say, well, I don't have to give you a reason. No, I don't, but I wanna tell people, hey, I don't wanna give a reason. And that's not how it's supposed to be.
You're drawing your own conclusion and I, I stand by what I said.
Perfectly okay. So where do we go from here, folks? You're in charge. Tell us what to do. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Okay, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I'm- It's just, I, I'm flabbergasted. We have a agenda item on the agenda again. And it's been on the agenda, what's this, the third time it's been on the, and here we are where we have individuals who admitted that they've come to the table and they're not prepared to have a discussion.
Progress hasn't been made, in my opinion, and Jay wasn't at the meeting when we had it on the agenda item last week. So as much as Peter wants to say, yes, we wanna move forward, this is a very important issue.
I, I didn't say I wanna move forward. I want to resolve things.
We wanna- Resolve things, yes, yes. I stand corrected, Peter. I stand corrected.
So-
I didn't agree with what your recommendation was, you know, what you walked away with as an understanding of what the discussion was going to be tonight.
And we, it isn't an issue of you agreeing with it, it's you agreed as the chair to place it on the agenda and to be prepared for a discussion. Now we have a full board here to have a discussion and now you're saying you're not ready to have the discussion.
I didn't put on the agenda your exact words, if you'll notice that.
Yes, I, I, I did notice that.
Because I didn't feel that it was appropriate.
Actually, the words I put were even less. Town manager's contract is all I asked for. You put more than that and yet you're not willing to have a discussion and you even added more in order for us to have a discussion on.
Because I wanna have the ability to have the discussion with Mike.
Then why'd you put the agenda item on the agenda altogether? If you're not prepared to have a discussion.
Because it's something that is important and if anyone else wanted to speak to it, they certainly could. Is it, is it to the, is it to the point where we have to have one hundred percent
No.
preparation for an agenda item?
Well, everybody's free to be as productive or prepared as they, as they want to. That's, and people can see who's prepared and who's not. I would just like the board to take an issue. We know what the issue is. We get the information, we can discuss it, and then make a decision.
Okay.
A decision that we fought through, instead of just rushing for a vote. But then after we voted, we find, well, gee, we really can't do that because we didn't think it through properly.
So what if I put-
The issue was a very simple one.
What?
Do we or do we not want to continue, Mike, as the town manager of the town of Oxbridge? I'm ready to do that right now. I have been for a long time.
So what if I put on the agenda for April twenty fifth that we take a vote on the, on whether or not to renew Mike's contract?
Put everything you want on the agenda. The thing is, are you gonna, at that time, are you gonna be ready to make a decision? That's the issue.
You said back on February fifth, fourteenth, that you would be-
If you put it off because Jay wasn't here, you wanna make sure he's here. Now he's here. And now we're gonna put it off again.
And we've heard what Jay's opinion was as well, which is that, you know, summarize, he doesn't feel prepared.
I don't know why we're pushing this right now, right? Contractually, I mean.
Basically, to be fair.
No, to be fair, right.
If you're in the mic, you let him know. Cause I, you know, if I were here, I might say, hey, fellas, take a hike, I'm hot here. I mean, give me a break.
I mean, the turmoil alone on just the fact that we have, you know, there was a course of action that when we had him answer his goals back in December, you know, to follow, I guess, in the, maybe to say everywhere else but in Oxbridge. When he did that and we didn't raise any issues then, we left with him with a perception that, okay, I'm on mark. I'm doing okay. And then we come around when it comes to the next course of action to start talking about the contract. I mean, we didn't do that. Out of the blue came, I'm not, I'm not gonna do this, exactly. I'm unhappy. And now here we are thirty days later where for the last thirty days, he's been wondering, do I have, am I gonna have a job? Am I not gonna have a job? I mean, would you wanna be in that position? Would you wanna walk in tomorrow and you're Bob Stelia, well, I can't make a decision?
Three, three, three things. One, both you, Peter and Bruce, I don't think she passed, all established a contract that decided that he should be notified on renewal the last month.
No, actually Beth did. She did, wrote this contract.
No, this contract's signed by-
No, but it was renewed last year and we agreed to put it forward. So all four of us have had an impact into this contract.
Okay, so now what has changed? That now we, we are not gonna live out to the date that we originally thought and we're gonna try to fast track this earlier. And what's the value of doing that to the town? What's the value?
I don't see a fast track-
We're not, we're not fast tracking. We're doing basically what we did last year at this time. We started-
We began on the evaluation and I said, we talked, I said, listen, I'm happy. I've been through managers and I'm happy.
But the renewal occurred at the end of, uh, in, in the May-June time. Why are we making this, happening in February?
It occurred sooner than that. We had discussions, we had discussions with him and talks during the six months leading up to that.
But you didn't renew his contract in there and there was a motion on the February fourteenth-
We did remove, we did remove, renew his contract.
To renew his contract.
Exactly.
It didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
I know, but why are we moving to renew his contract in February when his, his contract states that we don't renew contracts or, or by law, or by the contract, we don't have to renew it till the end of May?
No, we don't, but we-
So here's my issue with it. And, and this is not presupposing what the vote would be. But if it's an unfavorable vote, you've now taken five months of a good contract and you've thrown it out the window. You basically gave, Mike, you're gonna have to live out his contract for it and you're not gonna get any value off it.
I don't understand that.
No, we did-
Because if I tell you that you're no longer employed, but I'm gonna ask you to show up for work till the end of your contract, because I'm not gonna renew it, how effective is that person gonna be in their job?
Well, in the first place, if, if I told somebody that I'm not gonna renew the contract and they said, okay, back to sharing, then I'm gonna go right now. And I said, I would say, that's fine, okay. That's okay. Um, because I'm telling him, you know, I'm not happy with your work. And if I'm not happy with somebody's work, why would I keep them on and why would they wanna stay here?
Well, if you, if you believe it's little things that, that you, that can change and improve on and you give them those feedbacks and, and, and comments on it and they evolve into, you know, moving things in the right direction, why wouldn't you give them the opportunity?
Well, if they are, in fact, little things that can evolve, then you would say, it's, I'm happy with you, I wanna renew your contract, but here are things that I would like to see corrected. That's not what happened. We had a motion from Beth to tell the manager, we're not gonna renew the contract.
No, we had a motion from-
First from Carrie. Second motion. No, first motion actually was from Peter.
From Peter.
But then she gave the substantive not to, right, so we went, right.
Which didn't get seconded.
Right.
We went to the extreme.
And at that time, as I stand by Mike, this is now, I voted no on the renewal because I wasn't ready and I'm still not ready today. But if you would like to have a vote tonight, would you push for it?
You're hitting a thing with your microphone.
Oh, microphone.
Um, and if we, we push for it, if you're pushing that you need to have a vote tonight, then I'll let you vote.
I'm not, no, I don't need to have a vote tonight. All I'm saying, I'm going back to what Beth herself said. She said that she was unhappy and she had some very specific issues that she wanted to, and she's been talking to Mike about it and so on and so forth. That's what she said.
Sure.
And all I'm saying is, well, if you have those, why don't you tell the rest of us? And now she says, well, she's not ready to tell us. Well, what can I do with that? I mean, I can't force her to say something. She's an independent person.
Correct.
I just don't, you know, you ask me what I think, I will tell you. You know?
The-
I'll tell you, you needn't don't ask me.
To try to answer your question, Jay. Last year, and maybe one of the reasons why the actual literal reading of this contract was never discovered last year during this process because at about January, February of last year, even though we didn't officially take a vote, we, there was a discussion, are we happy with Mike? Yes, we are. Are we gonna continue going forward? Yes. We gave him that option. There was no, there was no question that he wasn't gonna be renewed in June. We were just moving forward. But with this board, there was a difference in that.
Yeah, there's costs in there, right?
When we started that, exactly. So that's where things are different. So yes, according to the letter of this, do we have to let him know? No, but and what's not written in the contract is what we explained was, is if we really have reservations, if members of the board are not going to approve his contract and they're not willing to come forward and say something and there's a great reservation there, then we need not to look at the contract and what we, we need to look at what's gonna be the reality on the ground. Not only from a point of him, but it's a point from the town. If we are not gonna work with Mike and don't want him here, then we need to let him know now because we need to find another town manager. We got a huge project, we need, need a chief procurement officer, we need to start that search now. Irrelevant of what the contract says, yeah, we can wait until May and then when, what are we gonna do? He's gonna be gone in thirty days. Ah, are you prepared to take all the steps that are necessary to get everything rolling at that point?
Here, if you don't renew his contract, whether he's present in the building or not, he's gone in thirty days or less.
From right now?
No, if, if the vote comes out, and I'm not saying this is how the vote would go, but if the vote comes out that, that you're not gonna renew his contract, how engaged do you think, uh, any employee would be?
You're right, yeah.
But at this point, but at this point, you're already, you already have that situation. Look, the-
Why? Why do we have that situation?
Why not?
I'll, I'll tell you one thing, Jay. I'll do my job too.
My, I don't, I'm not questioning, we're not, we're not, it's like, this is, I wish you hadn't to take part in this conversation because this is, this is more of a fundamental, this is irrelevant, irrelevant of you and, as an individual. This is, this is a procedural issue with, we've got a situation where a contract ends in May and we've got a situation where, instead of waiting, or it ends in June, rather, and by contract, we have to renew it by the end of May and we're taking a gamble without knowing what the, the result's gonna be by voting on it in February and trying to vote on it again in March. And it just adds a lot of risk to the equation without a lot of return.
You already have that risk, I guess, is my point.
You have that risk every day.
Absolutely.
With any employee.
Right, exactly, you do. But the difference is, is now, because of what transpired in February, we have a situation where we can't take that back. Okay? So given that, that it's already out there, I think that we're in a different situation now. Where putting it off till May is not gonna change anything. He is gonna do his job this month, the same as he will do it in May. That's not the point. But hanging over his head is, do I have a job? And there is a portion, I mean, I would, if I was in his seat, to wonder, do I need to start looking for a job now? Or we can take the vote and say, look, Mike, given everything, given your performance, given the things we have, we either know, you know in your mind from the little stuff that you've done, whether, is that enough to equate to getting rid of him?
No, no offense to Mike, but what is more beneficial for the town? Not more beneficial for me?
Letting him know right now if you, if we, if, letting him know so we can start the process.
So we can take the remaining money that's left on his contract and flush that out.
No, we're not flushing it out. He's still gonna work and do his job. You're assuming that he's not.
Okay.
I like to hear Mike speak for himself as opposed to Carrie.
You're right. I, I am, I am assuming that he's, that he's not gonna be a hundred percent effective in his job if you tell him his contract's not gonna be renewed.
Well, he, he's a professional and he will do the things he needs to do and so forth, but that's not, um, I, I fire people. And I have no compunctions about firing people. I don't say I, I let them go or something, I, eh, no, no, no. If I'm unhappy, you're fired. That's it. I have that easy. And I'm not, cause I know it doesn't mean the end of the person's life. They'll find something they like probably even better. But I'm looking to get the best deal for the town of Oxbridge. And I'm telling you, we have a good deal. And we're not apt to get a good deal like this. Again, if we do, it's gonna be, you know, a fortuitous occurrence, which doesn't happen all that often. I don't think you understand the kind of things that go on and the things that need to be done. Uh, but, you know, again, you don't have to give any reasons, you don't have to say anything. Uh, we can keep putting the thing off and off and off and off and off and see what happens. Again, look at what we did, what happened with the budget. You know, yeah, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, we got time, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. Oh, we got the time? Oh, okay. It's not Mike's fault, is it?
No.
But I hope somebody starts looking for somebody else, if that's what you have in mind.
Can't take that action unless it's something that's decided by the board.
Nothing prevents anybody from, who, who, if you think you know somebody who will be a great manager, kind of, hey, listen, I think we're gonna get rid of our manager. Uh, I think you'd be a good guy. Let's sit down and talk and see what you did. You know, um, you have to do those things. But do it in the open.
Right. I mean, to me, it's just a gut. You either wanna continue to work with him at this point or you don't. And, you know, I mean, the reasons I outlined before, I mean, we have the school project going on. He's knowledgeable of it. He's been involved in the process. To pull that out, I think would be detrimental to the town. He's our chief procurement officer. Not all town managers even have that. He would have, we could get a town manager in here that has to go to the training. So who are you gonna have as your chief procurement officer in the middle of the largest school project going on? He's had experience with, um, large projects before. Not all town managers have that. I mean, for that alone, the idea of changing the captain when the ship's at sea is just mind-boggling to me. I don't see where there's anything that he has done that has been so egregious that we would not want to renew his contract right now. And I agree with Peter. If, if, you know, if it's an issue of semantics of, well, we can get rid of him because we can just not give him a good performance rating, to me, that's a cop-out.
Sure, who's suggesting that?
No, but by saying, well, you know, that's how I'm perceiving it and maybe my perception is wrong, but it's like, well, I haven't, I haven't had any time to sit down and talk with him yet. You know, e- either wanna continue to work with him and work through those issues or you don't, and you know that right now. And, and you can sit down and talk to him and work through those things after we've told him, hey, we like you, we wanna continue working, at least for the next year with you or the next six months with you or the next, whatever the time is. We can, I believe we can say that now or we can say, it doesn't matter what I tell you because you can't fix it. And for that reason, we may not get the best progetivity out of you for the next three months, but, you know, honestly, that should be the least of our worries, really.
Okay.
So for clarity, I, if the, if you wanna vote tonight, we'll vote tonight. I will not vote to renew his contract. If you wanna, um, give me an opportunity to express my feedback and change my vote, uh, later in time, then as a board, go ahead. Um, it's as straight as it comes.
Well, that's fine. That's honest. Good. Now we know that. Now we're waiting for Beth to have her come. I don't know what we're waiting for. With you, because you've already talked to Mike.
If, if we went, if we went to a vote tonight, I would not vote to renew his contract either.
No, I know, I know that. What I'm, what I'm, what I don't know about-
How is that different than what Jay just said? I mean-
At what point you're gonna share with us? Because I can be convinced-
Peter, how is your question any different that you're not directing it to Jay either? Because he's committed to having the same type of conversation. So why is it that you're not questioning him, yet you're questioning me?
Okay.
Of the timeframe? And I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to put Jay on the hot seat either, but...
You know, but do it in a timely way. Come back, come back and convince me that I'm wrong in my assessment of Mike.
Oh, I, I don't have to, Peter, I'm not gonna change your mind, I'm not trying to change your mind.
That's not the point.
That's what we're supposed to do.
That's not the point.
We're one-fifth of a vote.
No, I disagree with that, no.
Yeah, I know, but we're supposed to give others reasons for our position, and try to convince the other members, that's what we do, that's why we, we have discussion and debate on issues, to try to convince each other, you know, this really is a good idea, yeah, I see your point, yeah, okay, you know.
I, I don't see the leadership skill, uh, in Mike that I would typically see in someone who holds a manager's position. And, and my feedback to Mike is, I think those are the specifics that you need to work on in the next couple of months, and start to exude some of those skills, go pursue some training, do something to, to go out and, and show some progress in that area.
And you've, you've, you've quantified what you determined to be leadership skills. In other words, so, so he'll know what it is he needs to do?
No.
Or he will, when you talk to him?
No.
No.
I, I, either, I, there's not a written test that makes a personal leader.
Okay.
Or not. You know, there's, you know, go out and, and talk to individuals in the community, within the workforce of the town, get, get a, a feedback in, in polling.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that was the assessment I made after doing that, and then I would hope that in a couple of months, when I do the same exercise again, I would get different feedback from within the community.
Okay.
That's the, the process.
Yeah, no, nothing wrong with that, I guess.
So?
So... And I can... So in your mind, if he does not, if I understand what you're saying correctly, if... If he had the, if he had the time to take, like you said, take the course, I mean, okay?
Well, I don't even know if that can fix it, right? You know, there's, there's a debate, is leadership inbred, or is it learned, or is it trained, who knows?
Exactly, and I, I...
I don't know the answer, but...
I mean, personally, I think there's a part of it that's, you either have it or you don't. Some people are born leaders and some aren't.
Right.
You know, and there's only so much you can learn. But, given that, if he did not, if he did not improve on his leadership skills, from what you said, then that would be grounds, that would be heavy enough to not renew his contract. That's your number one priority.
Sure.
Irrel, so...
Sure, this is not an easy job, this is, we, we are in tough financial constraints. We need leadership to pull us out of this, at this board, we need it at, at the town manager level in the day-to-day operations.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. The board of selectmen are the chief executive officers of the town. The town managers, the chief administrative officer of the town, it's the board of selectmen's job to set the priorities of the town fiscally and so forth.
Sure.
That's our job.
Yeah.
It's not his job.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean that he doesn't need to be a leader in what he does. By definition of being a manager...
If we don't set goals, we, we set, we gave them nothing as far as a budget goal. Except for Carrie's, we want a hundred thousand dollars in the...
This is, this is what I call proverbial chicken and the egg.
Yeah.
Which is, is there a lack of leadership because there's too much interference from the board, and that Mike can't get his leadership in order 'cause he's running around chasing the five different things we want him to do? Or are we, or are five people in there telling him what to do because he lacks the leadership to define what, what he's gonna do on his own? I don't know the answer to the question, Peter, that's what I'm trying to observe over the next couple of months.
But the answer to the question is, as far as the fiscal responsibility is concerned, there is no question, it's our job to set priorities.
Sure.
It's the manager's job to put those priorities into effect.
Sure.
So there's no chicken and the egg involved, we know how the, it's supposed to be. The problem is, we haven't held up our end of the bargain.
Sure, that does not make him unaccountable for what he's done.
He is accountable. He, he submitted a balance...
I'm not, I'm not here trying to pitch you that this is the best board and we've, we've slant, you know, we're, I can't believe, you know, Mike is, is, uh, directionless with such leadership we provide, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is, we do have some conflicts, and this town's been going through some change, and, and that we've got two new board members going on, we've got a big project going on. At this time, more than ever, we need some strong leadership at the department head level, at the town manager level, at the finance director level, at the board level, and who, who are gonna be the, the leaders to do that? And, and if you're comfortable, and, and I'm not criticizing your assessment of, of Mike at all, 'cause there's definitely some good things that came out in Mike, talking to people about Mike. I'm just not ready today to say, you know, hot damn, he's, he's our guy, he's the number one guy that's gonna, you know, as we go through this economic slump and come out the other side, he's gonna lead this town. I, I don't have enough data points. You guys may, I do not. So if you ask me to vote tonight, based on the data points I have from my term being here, and, and what I've done to try to get an assessment of, of Mike, I can't make a contract renewal decision. If you wanna vote tonight, I told you what my vote will be. If you wanna give me time to see if I can, if you can sway, and, and Mike can sway with his actions, my opinion, I welcome that, and I hope that that's the case, because it's a lot harder to find someone new, there's a lot more risk associated with it, I understand all your points, Carrie, and they're very valid. But at this point, I can't say that that risk outweighs the lack of leadership that I think we have right now. And it's not gonna come from this board, because there's only one seat, and, and Peter, if you run and get re-elected, it doesn't, it won't make a difference. So, we're gonna, we're gonna live through another year of this, when there's no change here? Something's gotta change.
Yeah.
In my opinion. And it's either gonna happen individually between us, where we, we, we change our behaviors, and we make these more productive, and we, we act more like a team, trying to solve problems, or it's gonna change at Mike's level, in, in the way he interacts with his department heads to get stuff done, grassroots up, or we gotta hope that, you know, people resign from the board, and, or new people get elected to, to cause that change, and that's up to the citizens to make that decision. But, status quo is not gonna suffice, and I think we all can agree to that.
What is, what is so broken in the town that it requires a drastic change?
Go... I'll ask for a week to finish my report. Let me finish my report, this is...
Well, let me ask you this, does it have anything to do with, um, personalities?
Personalities are always gonna be in effect everywhere, right? Just 'cause, you know, I don't like Peter, or Peter doesn't like Bruce, and, you know, whatever, that's always gonna be at play. But it's not a driving decision why you make a change. Hey, conflict is good in a lot of situations, it, it actually encourages, you know, sometimes better output.
Well...
But that's not the, the driving factor.
Does it have to do with discipline issues that haven't been addressed?
No.
Okay. I mean, I'm trying to...
It has to do with commu- communication, involvement, team, pulling together. This is, this town feels like oil and water. At the board sometimes, at the department head, to the, to the municipal, to the school, everyone's, it's like two opposite ends of a magnet, everywhere. And ultimately, we've gotta change that, and I think it's, it should start here at this board. We, we need to figure out how we, we work better. But then it's gotta be influenced down into the day-to-day operations. And if we're gonna stay out of the day-to-day operations as per the charter, then that means Mike's gotta make that happen. And if Mike's gonna make that happen, we gotta start seeing, I wanna start seeing that he's the guy that can make that happen, 'cause it's not happening right now. It's not. Go, you can go around and, and talk to, to the employees in the town hall, they'll, they'll all tell you that.
I, I see operations, government operations at the employee level going along fine. I don't see the same things that you're seeing. I see the routine work is getting, getting done.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is at a higher level, not at the lower levels. So, I, I, you know, I just don't know...
But morale's in the tank here.
But is that his fault?
It's not his fault, but it's his problem to solve. He runs day-to-day operations, he's gotta solve that.
So we're expecting him to solve a problem that's beyond his control? We're in control of all the union negotiations.
This town is his team.
It is, but where...
This, this, the town hall employees, the municipal side is his team. We need to rally our team, both morale-wise, to increase productivity, we're asking them to do more with less, people are miserable, and that all results into things such as grievances, and complaints, and less productivity.
And you don't think as a board, you don't have a direct impact on it?
I'm not saying we don't, but there's two things. The board has issues, Carrie, I'm not saying we don't have an impact. But, as the day-to-day manager, he has direct influence to those people. I don't, I, until I went out and kinda did this interview process, I didn't talk to half these people before, I didn't even know them.
Well...
I think, okay... My, my inquiry is this, is I, I mean, I believe that you know, right now, Jay has not, maybe I'm wrong, but if what you're talking about is specific instances where you wanna share with us, you know, names and...
No, I don't. I, I actually told people that I would not specifically share their names, uh, within an open forum, I don't think it's, this is the right forum to do that.
I agree with that.
No, I'm not referring, I mean, because there are, my point is, is if we went into executive session right now to hash through specifically what you're talking about, would that... My concern is this, is that what... I would expect the morale to be low, and it's not just Oxbridge. Pick a town where the morale is low right now. There is a tremendous amount of pressure on everybody, coming from all different angles. And I guess my concern is, is that we're expecting one individual to have the control over the way that others are perceiving things. And can, can one individual, no matter who that, can they do that? Is the expectation in saying, well, he's just not a good enough manager? In this town, there, there's issues that have been underlying, certain departments have been in conflict with other departments. I don't, personally, I don't think any town manager's gonna fix that, until those particular individuals decide that they're going to personally change the way that they look at things. You know, and so, I mean, morale is what it is. There's, there's a conflict between the schools and the municipal side.
Mm-hmm.
That has been here for as long as I've lived in Oxbridge. And apparently, it was even before I got here. And I don't see how the individual sitting in the town's manager's position is gonna change that, when there's always two sides to the story, and there's always two people involved in an argument.
But could the town manager help to improve upon those issues? By...
I think he has, but I think he's at a point where, you know, you can only, you can only have a conversation with someone if they're gonna be respected to the conversation. And I think that it takes two to tango, and I think he's dancing, and we're blaming him because they're not tangling, when it's, in some cases, I think it's the other person who really should be in, you know, the one being looked at, instead of, you know, oh, that person can't do anything wrong. You know, I think a lot of it is popularity and different directions, and I think it's unfair. The way that we treat the municipal employees compared to some other employees in town, and they all know it, they all talk, I mean, there's an, it's a self-created problem. And as a board, we have asked him to do some very difficult stuff when it comes to employee relations. Just the position we've taken on the union contracts alone. I don't care who's sitting in that manager's position, it's gonna be a tough road for them to hold that position.
Sure. It's a tough job. Being a manager is not an easy job.
I know, I used to be one.
Historically, we do not have currently the number of grievances and, you know, personnel issues that we used to have. It's much, much better. As far as relationships between the school and the town, it's a thousand percent better than it was when Meg Gaffoon was the superintendent. She absolutely refused to let her people give the town treasurer the information they need to recover Medicare money. We lost more than half a million dollars, because she would not allow her people to give us the information. Half a million dollars. That's what the situation used to be here. It's not that way anymore, and it hasn't been for a while.
But we have to pay for part of that salary employ, position in order to even have that now. They're not giving us the information without us having to financially provide for that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We always paid the salary of a person to do that. That's not new. Because the money comes to the town, but she would not allow her employ, the money has, the information has to come from them. She just flat-out said, no, you are not to cooperate with the town side. That's what it was. And it's half a million dollars we lost. Gone forever. But anyway, um, do whatever you wanna do. You know, I mean, you hold the key, so... It's up to, to you. So what else we got?
I, you know, I'm...
I'm getting hungry.
I'm gonna make them, you know, I think that because we put this out a month ago, I think that we need to... I think that we need to let Mike know. And I, because I think, not only from the position of Mike, actually, I take that back, not from the position of Mike, but from the position of us. If, you know, we need to start getting ready, if we don't wanna continue to work with Mike, then we need to start getting ready to try to find a replacement. Because whether he's gone in thirty days, or he's gone in three months, if you vote not to renew his contract, we gotta have somebody else in here because of the looming school issue, and the procurement issue, and the budget issue. And I think that us putting this off another month is detrimental to the town, because it's gonna put us that much further behind. And it's an issue of, we work with them or we don't, so...
Seven more weeks. Said he'd do it in a week.
But we don't have a meeting for two more weeks, and then we're at the end of fe, then we're at our next meeting. She said something about April twenty.
March twenty eighth is our next meeting.
Yeah, no, I think, that's two more weeks off. It's further off. We, you know now, or you don't know now?
Yeah, there's no difference.
It's not gonna make a difference.
It's not a fair window to assess them under two weeks.
No, it's not. You either know now, or you don't know.
You wanna vote tonight, or two weeks, you're basically saying tonight. I, I was asking for May, but if, if you guys wanna go to a vote tonight, then...
Yeah, I mean, I...
The board's, the board's here.
May, I think, is detrimental to the town to put off anything that long. It, it really is. So I make a motion to, um... To enter into contract negotiations for a new contract for the town manager.
I'll give them the time they want. Couple of weeks, three weeks, whatever. Just do something.
He just said it's arbitrary, it's not gonna make a difference.
No, no, I, one or two weeks doesn't make a difference.
That's what he's saying, he'll give you the weeks.
How many weeks you want?
He wants until May.
Until May? Well, why not let him work his contract?
You, you, you're telling him to start looking for jobs.
Job, that's, right.
Which is, you know, that's fine, that's what you wanna do, that's fine.
That's what the board wants to do, I, I am one, one-fifth of a vote, I told you where my position is tonight.
No, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, listen, Jay...
I'm trying not to be coy, I'm not...
I don't wanna dissuade you, I'm just telling you the reality is, you know, if, if I'm, if I'm the manager...
Correct.
And I get my contract is up, and I'm waiting for something, you say, well, I haven't decided yet, and so on and so forth.
Quite frankly, if we're speaking candidly...
I'm now coming to work tomorrow.
Quite frankly, I think we blew it when we called for the vote last month.
Well, that's why it's already out there. The elephant's in the room, let's recognize the elephant, and let's, either we're gonna move on, or we're gonna continue to work with them. I mean, that's where we're at. A cha, given two weeks, a week, a month, it isn't gonna make any difference. We can either officially step up and say, we wanna continue work for you, and we're gonna do what we can to try to iron out a new contract, or not.
That, that's different from what your motion is, 'cause I support your motion, which is, we need to work on a new town manager contract, regardless if we extend that to Mike, or extend it to the Pope, or the President of the United States. That, that's an action we, that we need to take.
I hope we can get someone more qualified than the President of the United States.
Talk into that one, too.
No, but, I mean, it, but it's not just working on a contract, it's specifically... It's for this town manager.
It shouldn't be for a town manager, it should be for the position of town manager.
Why, because as, as selectman, if you don't wanna work with him in May, then we are that much further behind in looking for a new town manager, when he would then be gone less than sixty days from that. There's a, there's a surrounding town that is also in the search... There's a, there's a surrounding town that is also in the search of this. Who financially is in a better position, at least they're budgeted. We're not even budgeted for a higher salary than what we currently have. We have a budget on the table. I mean, we, we need to progress. We're already behind. We're set next year, the town manager, on a certain amount of money. And if we can't find one within that time, then we've gotta adjust our budgets. And isn't that better to know that and start planning for it than to push it out? Because we're not willing to say, hey, you know, these are the issues. Let's go ahead and set up a way to work with you on these issues, and maybe then six months from now, if you haven't corrected it, then you're gone. Or a year from now, if you haven't corrected it, then you're gone. But to push it out now because you're afraid to extend beyond July just doesn't make any sense to me. If you wanna give them a chance to improve, then let's go ahead and say, look, we wanna enter a new contract with you. Let's get into the negotiation of a new contract, and then we can talk about how we wanna draft that contract. But we can't do that until we open the door, and if I don't think if we don't open that door right now, then we might as well tell them goodbye. So my motion stills on the table to enter negotiations with the town manager on a new contract. A new contract is not defined. And then we can spend the next month trying to define that contract. And then that time, you guys can have your feedback. And then bring that to the table as parts of why you want certain things in the contract or the length of the contract or the associated with the pay. And we're still gonna be at the same place, because after that, you can go, I don't want this contract, but during this whole time, you, we've been working with him, and it's a win-win for both sides.
So you're making a motion to negotiate with the town manager on a new contract?
To enter into negotiations.
Enter into negotiations.
Right, because it's contract that we would-
Why wouldn't we draft a contract, agree to what the contract is, and then enter, like, wha- I guess I'm-
It's not a st- because it's, it's, the contract is specific. It's not a position contract. It's specific to a certain person.
Correct.
So it's with him.
For his situation, because, okay. Alright.
Do we have a second?
Peter?
I'm tired, I wanna go home.
I don't know why it has to be specific to him, Carrie. Why can't we do it and then make variables in the contract like term? Just you fill in the name, you fill in the term?
'Cause we did all discuss earlier that the contract we have isn't effective. There are ways that it's not possible
Right, right in a way that it can be used in a short term and, and in the long term.
Because if you don't want it for this town manager, then we need to start the process in looking for somebody to replace him. And we need to do that now. We don't need to be starting that two months from now when we're already past the point where they're that much courts- closer to a budget, we're that much deeper into the middle of the school project. We need to be able to, and I don't even know if it's gonna be possible, go from one town manager to the other.
Okay, I, I second, I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Restate the motion, please.
Motion by Carrie Robertson to enter negotiations with the town manager on a new contract, seconded by Jay Kaye.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So what have we accomplished with all that?
I don't have a clue.
You, there is something we've accomplished.
No, now-
We'll have my supper for another half hour.
Let's move on to member issues.
Um, member issue, I request on the next agenda that we put in, um, item to start, um, new search for a town manager. Or the procedure, the policy on how you're gonna do this.
Prior to us doing that, I think that we should actually look at the existing contract. Regardless of who it applies to, I think there are things that need to be tightened up.
Why don't we make a motion while we're into the last topic to do that?
Hmm?
Into the broad heading.
Well, because I think that until we actually start the search, I think that going through and, you know, starting the framework of the contract, it will change based on who our pool is, looking at the surrounding areas, what the salaries are gonna be. I mean, Blackstone's in the middle of hiring a town administrator right now. They're, you know, offering a range of ninety-five to a hundred and five thousand. That's gonna substantially affect the contract and how that we're doing it. I think that we need to, you know, we could be six months before we have a town manager in here. Why are we gonna take the time now to draft a contract? I think we need to start.
I, I agree.
Well, I think it can be done simultaneously. That's what I'm saying, is it can be done simultaneously, not that one has to precede the other.
That's true.
Any other member issues? Peter?
No.
No, I'm addressing you.
Yes, you do, you do, Peter.
Huh?
Was it under member issues that Peter wanted to start a list of items with our state representatives?
That's- That was my su- what my, what I was gonna ask you, yes, what I was gonna a- ask you to, um,
Oh, that was her.
if you'd be willing, 'cause you have mentioned multiple things, to invite Senator Moore, Kevin and, um, Ryan to come and address the board. Um, ABCC is one of them, um, lobby for health insurance.
Right, Ryan will be here next meeting.
Huh?
Ryan will be here at our next meeting.
For what purpose?
Just to attend the minutes.
Oh.
But would you be willing to put together a comprehensive list of things that you would like to have discussed? And then we can talk about how it should be scheduled, if it would be a separate meeting or part of our regular agenda?
Yeah. Yeah, yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Um, any other member issues? No? Town manager update?
Um, one item, please, to report to the board that we have, uh, done further negotiations on health insurance. Uh, we got Harvard Pilgrim to quote, and they gave us a good quote. Based on that, uh, both Blue Cross and, uh, Fallon have lowered their, their, uh, increase for next year. Blue Cross has lowered it to five point nine percent, Fallon to nine point nine percent.
Was this, um, something that we wanted to encourage all town employees to take benefit in?
Yes, we've, we've looked at, and Fallon actually has an alternative plan that may, i- is extremely beneficial that we're gonna encourage the, uh, the Fallon subscribers at least to move towards, uh, I don't know if we wanna long-term be encouraging people to get off Blue Cross and to Fallon, 'cause I don't see it as something we, we will have long-term.
What were the rates again, Mike, on the Blue Cross?
The increase for Blue Cross is five point nine, the increase for Fallon is nine point nine. Blue Cross is down from eight and a half, Fallon down from seventeen.
Wow, that's huge.
How, how, how do they do that?
He negotiated really well.
Fallon, what, again, eight point nine?
Nine point nine.
Nine point nine, thank you, from seventeen, okay.
Seventeen.
Okay, um, is there anything else that you had to add?
Um, that, that's all I've got to add.
As an update, hold on.
Um, I did publish a, on, on the other side of the, uh, the ledger here, the, you may wanna read this story from May.
Thank you.
We're not changing our figures yet, but we're certainly gonna be watching this.
Um, I had, uh, sorry, does anyone have any questions or comments on that?
Have they said how much lower?
No, that's why we're not making any changes till we get something more concrete. I'm gonna contact, uh, our state reps and Senator Moore, uh, to see, uh, if they can get us any information.
Any other questions about this from the board? I had a couple of questions as we've been following through on. Um, we had talked about cell phone usage and whether or not it was worth pursuing the detail of looking into that. What's your opinion on that?
I don't, uh, I mean, we've, I review the bills periodically. I, I haven't found any evidence of the bills, so I don't think it's necessary to, uh, to look at cell phone usage right now in, in any formal way.
Okay.
Uh, I do look at the bills and we had issues, we've had issues in the past, um, and they've been addressed.
Right, what you had did before. I guess my, I had a question also. Is everyone still on the, is everyone on the same carrier or not?
Uh-
I wasn't sure if that was determined, to see if there was a way to maximize that.
I'm not sure if everyone's on the same carrier. Oh, that's one other item. I, I think all the members of the board know this, but our building inspector has resigned. Uh, I've contacted the state building inspector. He, he is available to, um, the fire department on short notice if there is a structure fire, uh, because if there is a structure fire, we do need a building inspector to, to inspect the structure. And I've, uh, spoken to, uh, town manager in, uh, uh, North Bridge about getting, uh, his man on it on a per diem basis to cover until we get a new inspector in or I possibly get the plan to reconsider. I have spoken to him though, and, and it wasn't encouraging.
Do you think it's worth continuing to revisit at this point or?
I'll talk to him again, certainly, but, uh-
I was asking the question, Mike, Harry.
Sorry.
But some, some of the issues he raised, I, I think we're, we're not, uh, his terms, I don't think were acceptable.
Okay.
This is the, the Northbridge building?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. Sorry.
Spoke with Northbridge town manager, sorry.
I spoke to him about, uh, getting someone in-
Uh-huh.
On a temporary basis. Uh, I don't think it's gonna be at all difficult to hire, uh, a, a new building inspector. I, I haven't, uh, I haven't even publicly spoken of this, just from the rumor getting around. I've received one resume and two phone calls. So there are certainly people out there with, with the experience that, uh, have an interest.
Probably actually post.
I'll be posting this, uh, tomorrow, probably. I've got the, uh, the ad written.
I'd like to see if there's a way to salvage the-
Blanche, uh, Blanche certainly has, uh, he's a knowledgeable and competent building inspector, beyond question.
Okay, um, Blanchard update. So we know that we have the article on the town warrant to change the zoning on it, um, and that the, the antique shop is moving elsewhere, and then there was that other individual, remember that individual, um, who had contacted George, I think it was?
With the craft, the craft, uh, uh, craft school?
Did you get to talk to him? Yeah, yeah.
I'm meeting him tomorrow, uh, tomorrow, too.
Oh, great, okay.
To show him the building. We had gone out there once and it was just, we couldn't get into the building. There was just-
It snowed.
Too much snow.
Okay. Okay. Um, and, um, when is your next team meeting scheduled for?
My next one?
Team meeting? Well, department head meeting, sorry.
Oh, I, I'd have to look at the schedule.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Um, I'll look at, I'll look at the schedule.
Okay. And then, um, there is an individual that you were going to write up. Has that happened?
I, I don't have the write-up out, but I had a meeting this morning with her and the union.
Okay.
The, the write-up will proceed from the discussions there.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that's appropriate for now or not.
Uh, we, we had a a discussion with her, the, the steward and a met, uh, a representative from SEIU.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had on my list. Anyone else have any town manager pieces now?
What was, uh, there was a, uh, last week with the school, there was some stuff that needed to get, get out.
The variance?
Yeah. Where did we sit on that?
The what?
The variance for Quaker Highway. Of the, you already spoke to it, um, in the SBC update.
Oh, yes, the, uh, the easement, or not easement, rather, the, the access.
Easement, right.
Oh, that was an easement.
Okay, alright.
I asked, actually, I was asking Trey about this. Whatever happened with the folks at Wildlife in that street we talked about today? That didn't get in, Wildlife, Deer View-
Oh, Deer Fry.
They didn't come forward.
Deerview never came forward.
They didn't come forward. Uh, they have till fall.
Maybe for next winter maintenance.
Yeah, for the, for the w- next winter maintenance issue. Their, their street's in good shape, so it's not a matter of getting, uh, repairs. Their, their concern is primarily with winter maintenance, and they should be able to make that for the fall.
Right. But they just-
They didn't submit a petition.
Sorry.
Yeah.
And their attorney, they shared attorney with-
I have another question.
Attorney with someone, yeah, with-
With someone, so, so they were well aware of the, uh,
Yeah.
The timelines.
Um, what's the status of the inspector stipends? I know that they're going through how to code it, what to code it as.
Uh, we just need them to devote it the next, uh, SBC meeting to take it out of the contingency, and then we can pay it.
Okay. Um, so do we have an action item then as well? Because our next meeting will be the joint meeting on the thirtieth. So that can be added.
No, we're not involved in that.
Well, I'll ask John to put it on for, uh, for an action item.
Right, right, but just to make sure there's, there's nothing else that we need to take then as an action at that point.
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay, SBC. Okay. And you let John know, or ask, we'll ask him to put it on. This has all been figured out. Okay, alright. Anything else? Anyone?
Is there an idea for the agenda or-
Um, except for executive session, so-
Uh, no.
Oh, that, that's right, we still have this, but that's executive.
Right, right, okay.
So at eleven forty-eight, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting and enter an executive session, discuss SEIU grievance, charter contract negotiations, and firefighter union contract negotiations with no further business to follow.
Second.
All those in favor? My roll call.
You didn't, yeah.
Stay the last one. Strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union collective bargaining units.
No, that wasn't in my note here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass that one.
Can I have UTA or SEIU? Do you have a SEIU?
No, I have UTA.
UTA.
Yeah. SEIU should be UTA. Sorry.
So I wanna take that one again for the top poll.
Motion to enter executive session for discussion action on charter contract negotiations, UTA contract update, firefighter union negotiation update, strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union and collective bargaining units.
Second.
Roll call vote, Pittman, I.
Yes, I'll tie.
Roberts and I.
All right, Chair and I.
Okay.